I want a divorce. What do I get?
I just, I already acknowledged that.
What do I get?
Nothing.
Come on, I get something. Come on, it's a divorce. I gotta get something out of it.
That's the best one.
Come on! I don't want to drive long enough now, I can't use it. How about a tractor wheel?
How about a flat tire?
You busy?
Yes.
Make an egg?
No. No, there's no eggs.
Eggs, really? You eat chickens?
No, they're still there and I don't want them there. So if you, you want some? I'll give you some.
She probably would, I don't know. I'll talk to her, I don't really want the damn things.
No, they don't lay anymore. Like, one a day and I just, I'm done. It's like fifteen.
Yeah, I want chickens and double eggs. That's exactly what I want. Target practice.
Well, like last year, I packed up like five of them, put them out in the woods for food for who I lady.
Do they come back? You know, they eat ticks.
Yeah, but what happens if you leave them out in the yard? They make a mess. So, like, they'll go roost up in the hay. They'll crap all over the thing, I can't sell it.
Yeah, I got what you're saying.
It's a bad, it's a bad.
Bad combination for you.
Yes. Good time.
Okay, I got six thirty. Call a meeting to order. First item on the agenda is pledge allegiance. Would you all rise? Remove your hats, pledge allegiance and... Paul, would you lead us?
Yes, sir. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Is anybody online, Olivia?
Yes.
Can they hear us?
Michael, can you hear us?
Thank you. Pledge allegiance. Agenda review. Anybody want to do anything with this agenda? I got that. Break next. Agenda review. Everybody okay? Everything looks good? Comments from citizens, topics on the agenda? Dave, you want to do that?
No, I'd let you, I mean, it's okay.
Well, I, honestly, I didn't know Chip Steele very well.
Okay.
So, why don't you do it, Dave?
Okay. I'd like a moment of silence. A moment of silence for Chip Steele passed away. He'd served the town as a selectman for, I think, six or seven years. I know I served with him. So, if we could have that, please, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Comments from citizens, topics not on the agenda? Anybody? Ray?
I just have the annual yearly notice to the board that we're going to be posting roads for mud season. I'll just have to just give this to you so you understand that we're going to be posting roads.
Yes, sir.
And it needs to be posted, this is the directions.
Have we signed it? Has this been signed yet?
You don't need to sign it. It's just to notify the board that the roads will be posted. It has to be posted in two places in town and I can take care of that if you'd like.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you. I just had one myself that I wanted to do real quick and I may have Brandon help me a little bit with that and Olivia. Town meeting will be live on the Google Meet, not on Zoom. There's a link on the town website and maybe the next meeting will have, like, put up a picture or a slide of that so we can show people where that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got plenty of time. But I want to keep driving that home that that is... This, we're typically on Zoom and that's not going to be. It's going to be on Google. Google Meet or something like that. So, I just want to make sure everybody's clear and pass it around, spread the word so that people know where to go for town meeting. Okay? Thank you. Anybody else, topics not on the agenda? Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Also, I didn't know the... I guess I was paying attention to your Google, but also it's going to be held at the school. So, you can go live to the town meeting.
Yeah, oh, yes. Yes, you can go.
That's all posted, I think. I think I saw ten thirty for the school, twelve thirty for the town. Did I see that? Brandon?
I think it's ten, ten and twelve thirty.
Yeah, ten AM for the school, twelve thirty for the town.
So, you can, everybody can go live.
Yes, you can go in person.
In fact, there are two articles on the warning for floor vote.
Yep.
So, I'm not sure how that'll work unless the moderator decides to take that up as Zoom. I don't know how you would raise your hand. I'd maybe develop a way, if that came to that, other than a voice vote. I don't know. You'd have to run that by him too, Brandon.
Yep, I just, I just...
Yeah, there'd have to be a roll call vote for everybody online.
To prove that you're a voter. You could be online and not a voter.
That's a good point. Interesting. But, yes, and I'm, yeah, thank you. And I apologize, I was striving home just to the point that it would be available online. But I think, yeah, leaving out the fact that it is an open meeting and we will all be there in person and you're welcome to come. Love to have you there. Any comments?
Oh, I missed your chair, actually.
Okay.
The comment that I have is, you know, the town has an AED here that is not in service.
What's that, AED?
What is the AED?
Yeah.
It's a D-BIT.
Okay.
The Detterulator.
Okay, not in service?
It's in the box, but it's not in service.
That means, well, batteries are dead or it needs to be, it needs to be serviced?
Yeah, and I'm not sure you're going to get a battery for it.
Did you, did you happen to mention this to the town manager?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. You got a handle on that?
Yep.
Okay. So, that's being looked into.
Yeah, and my suggestion would be that if we can't get the batteries for it, that if it has to be replaced, that we get the same one that our contracted service uses. So, you're not playing around with ripping pads off and putting different pads on or getting an adapter, that we can just unplug and plug in.
I guess that's a discussion to have at the, once we get to that fork in the road. Thank you, Barb. Anybody else? Review minutes, previous meeting. Do I hear motion to approve the minutes from one seventeen twenty-three?
I'll approve those minutes with, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes with corrections.
Thank you. Motion's been made in second to approve the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes?
I have one quick thing if I can.
Yes, sir.
Under seven, the Q1 financial report. I just wanted to clarify this one, two, third paragraph down. There are also concerns with the Scotty Fire Department budget and it talks about eighty-eight percent of their fuel budget. Was it, was it eighty-eight percent of the fuel budget or just eighty-eight percent of the total budget that they were at? Or was it fuel budget?
Take a peek here.
Yeah, that's not, that's not correct. I think, I think they paid their fuel budget, but they had like eighty-eight percent of it left, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I just...
Correct? Right.
I just know when you go down below and it says the fire department has got their, that eighty-eight is that total number.
Yeah, but they haven't expended eighty-eight percent. They paid a hundred percent.
I'm going to get with Nicole after the meeting and just give her the actual...
I just don't know what we said. I, here, that's all. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, just, you just correct that line so it's correct. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Dave?
But I think it's the truth. It's, you could easily say that they've expended that amount because they prepaid. I don't think you can change the...
Well, it's a hundred percent expended, so I don't think we're talking about oil.
Okay.
Right, right.
I was wondering if that was, because in the, we were discussing, and you go down just a little bit further where it says the select board, it's got the whole, it's got everything on there. The town clerk, the listers, the land use and so on and so forth. You know, Scotty Fire is there with the eighty-eight percent. So, I just didn't know if that's...
Yeah, so that's eighty-eight percent of budget at that time.
And that's what I wondered if we, that comment was made up there was it was eighty-eight percent of budget, not just the fuel.
Yeah, just correct that sentence. Brendan?
So, yeah, the Scotty Fire Department has expended eighty-eight percent of their full budget, which that was true at that time and it differs today.
And that's probably what it's supposed to say is full, not fuel.
Right, right.
There you go.
Right.
Just a word.
Right, it's just a word. Okay.
Or maybe full instead of fuel.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, change the U to an L.
There you go.
Solves the question. Solves, thank you. Any other discussion on the, on the minutes?
I have a correction to my minutes. I put, um, I put Monday instead of Tuesday. I want to fix it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? Hearing none. Motion's been made to accept the minutes with corrections, one seventeen twenty-two three. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Transfers memo, ARPA transfers. This is a memo from the select board, from, I'm sorry, from Steve Hire, the treasurer. Brendan, you want to take this?
You can pass it right over to the treasurer.
Okay, Steve, go.
So, back in December, December nineteenth, when you met, you voted to transfer twenty thousand dollars in the, from the ARPA grant to the firefighting equipment reserve fund. You, transferring ARPA money to a reserve fund is a prohibited use of that money. So, you can't, you can't transfer it into the reserve fund. However, you can use ARPA money to purchase protective PPE, firefighting equipment. You just can't transfer it into the reserve fund. So, you could vote to have the fire department spend twenty thousand dollars with ARPA funds to buy PPE or you could transfer PPE expenses you'd already incurred to ARPA. You just can't put your ARPA money into a reserve.
Okay. So, what is your, what is your best recommendation here to opt to fund the fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars from ARPA instead of a reserve account? Bring the total ARPA funding for firefighting equipment gear to twenty thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
Yeah, it depends on what your intention was. I mean, you did, at that meeting, you did approve fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars worth of PPE purchases to come out of the reserve fund. You could instead take those purchases out of ARPA. Or you could just tell the fire departments to go and buy another twenty thousand dollars worth of gear. I'm sure they're going to have a need for that anyway. Depends on whether you want to fill that twenty thousand dollars with things you already bought, whether you want to use the twenty thousand dollars to buy additional. Since you were transferring it to the reserve fund, originally your intention was probably to put that aside for future PPE purchases. And since you can't do that, you could have them spending money now.
Dave? This was with your motion.
Yeah, I have a question for Brandon.
Yeah.
There were two purchases made with dates on them, one for fourteen thousand two thirty for gear and another one for five thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars for that, for that machine, for the machine that washed the gear.
Right.
Those are all done. They're over with, right? They sent, they've been, the checks have been sent out to the vendors.
Yeah, but what we can do right now is instead pay for those two items with ARPA funds and then just keep the twenty grand in the reserve.
No, I, yes, which is where I'm going to get to.
But how, I don't want to split hairs, but that was done a month or two ago, right? The vendors have already been paid.
They have been paid.
So, we can't make the checks out from ARPA funds to the vendors?
The checks aren't made out from ARPA or they're just made from the town?
Yeah. You don't have a separate ARPA checking account. It's just town checks.
Yes, I did that on purpose because I listened in some way to avoid having a special article for additional tax money.
Yep.
And knowing that that account was just drained by twenty thousand. So, Josh was online asking for a reserve article for non-motorized fire equipment.
Yep.
So, to correct this motion, to correct this, which I want to do, I'll make a motion that we pay fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars for turnout gear directly from ARPA funds and five thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the washing machine that washes the gear for a total of twenty thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? This workout, okay, Steve?
Yeah, you might want to technically also at some point reverse your motion to move the twenty thousand dollars into the reserve fund just because it's federal money and because it would be good to have something on record that you can do that.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor now. So, let's deal with that one first.
Yes.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, because this is, this other motion is a motion that we took action on, it's a motion that we have to reconsider. You can't just rescind the motion. You have to, so I need a motion to reconsider.
I'll make that motion to reconsider the transfer of twenty thousand dollars even from ARPA funds to the firefighting equipment and gear reserve fund.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. And discussion? Is that, is that clear enough?
Well, when I said reconsider then, I also said to remove, I will amend that to say to remove, right? We want to actually take it out of that.
We never put it in.
Okay, we never put it in? Okay, good. Because that was, I was asking about bookkeeping then, about whether the monies could then be just gone out to the vendors. But I think the vendors are paid.
So, the motion...
I want to make sure, I want to make sure the motion, when, just by reconsider, that there's actual action, that we are not putting the money, right? That's the whole goal.
That's, that's correct.
That we are not transferring, yep, twenty thousand dollars of ARPA funds into the fire equipment reserve fund. I think we can do that by the minutes, right? You can clarify that, yes.
Okay. Motion's been made in seconded, all in favor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, that's, that's, yes.
Can I ask a question about ARPA money and that stuff now that we voted those through? It wasn't about either one of the motions. It was...
Okay, regarding what?
Well, I'm just, I was curious about, when we have ARPA money, because Steve was trying to talk about how that worked, is you can't put it into like a reserve and then use it out of the reserve. If, if something's already spent, we already bought something, can we go back later and say we want to use ARPA money for something we already spent?
Yes, in this case you can. If you bought, if you bought something ten years ago and now you decide you want...
No, no, no.
But, you can't. But, but yes, since it's within the same...
Okay. And then we just, you just have to maneuver and say now I'm going to pay for this.
What is that period, Steve? I'm sorry, Paul. What is that period roughly? The COVID?
We have until December of twenty...
Six?
Four to spend the money.
Twenty-four to designate it, twenty-six to expend, expend it in full. Anything that's not spent by twenty-six has to go back to the feds.
But what if, I guess, back to my question of, the money's already spent out of a certain account and then we have the ARPA money and we decide later on that we want to now use this money to pay for something that came out of, let's say, the fire apparatus money or something, we can just say now, well, that money's already spent. We can just say, let's...
As long as you're not putting it in a reserve account is, from what I, I understand.
You just put it...
Because it's within the same budget here.
Nope. Nope, that's good.
It gets more complicated when you're crossing budget years.
All right, so as long as it's this year.
But, but that makes more sense along the lines of, what Brendan has told me about how it can be used like a general fund expense account almost, which seems kind of broad and wide open and didn't make sense to me. But, but now it's starting to.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think. I could be wrong.
Don't go anywhere.
Yeah. Okay. So, we're all set with ARPA? The ARPA transfers and that's all set. Town manager report?
So, the first item in our report was actually addressed some of the comments that were made about town meeting. You want me to go back through that again or are we good since you've already announced it?
Up to you, Brendan. You're right, we've already been through it. But there is other stuff in here.
I'll say it one more, one more time. Annual town meeting will be held in person and virtually on Saturday, March fourth twenty-three. The school meeting begins at ten AM. The town meeting begins at twelve thirty PM. We will not be using Zoom for virtual attendance. The school already have their equipment set up and we will be using their Google Meet. The link is meet.google.com/ikz-mniv-ogv. The phone number is one four one three seven five two zero two seven three. The PIN number is six oh four two eight three one seven nine pound. Our town meeting warning has been signed, attested and posted. Town annual reports have been submitted to Doolittle's. The town meeting warning and details are on the front page of our website as an urgent alert. So, if you go on the front page, you'll see in red, an urgent alert for town meeting. And if you click on it, that'll forward you right over to the, right over to the virtual town meeting if you choose to join it virtually. Any questions on, on that? Great. President's Day is Monday, February twentieth. The select board meeting will be moved to Tuesday, February twenty-first twenty-three. Is that okay with you guys? All right, Martin Memorial Hall roof replacement. I've been in contact with Connecticut River Roofing and the point person for the board of trustees and I have met and a color selection was decided on. So, I've relayed that to Mr. Brusso. Him and I are meeting either this week or early next week and we'll have something prepared for the board on the, at the following meeting in regard to our contract and plan of action. Hazard mitigation plan. We received an eight thousand dollar grant to update our hazard mitigation plan. So, the agreement has been signed and we begin the process of procuring a consultant. The consultant will move forward with the planning process and we anticipate completion by next year. There will be a public input. There's a public input part, so we'll need to put it on the agenda to have public input on the hazard mitigation plan. Our, our next transfer station joint committee is, meeting is next week and that meeting is going to be held at Martin Memorial Hall this time. The select board chair in Reading will be there, the select board chair in West Windsor, our select board representative, Paul Tillman, and Tom Kennedy. If anybody has any questions or concerns you'd like me to raise to the committee, please let me know. Emergency operations center enhancement grant received notification that our EOC enhancement grant was accepted to install a generator at Martin Memorial Hall. I just received the sub grant agreement today and I'm getting through that process. There's some questions on there that I need to answer. So, it's tentatively accepted until I submit that narrative. Any questions on that? Basically, what we would be doing here is we've already paid twenty thousand dollars to Brookfield Service and that was to be paid from ARPA at that time. The grant is a fifty-fifty match. So, if everything works out the way that we think it will, we would transfer six thousand eighteen back to the ARPA fund. So, I'll let you guys know as more information becomes available.
Any questions for the town manager? Go ahead.
Was there an issue with the electrical service here in coordination with the generator?
No.
You sure?
Not that I'm aware of.
Maybe you better check with John. I thought he was talking about it. I don't know.
Yeah, John drew a map and it's going to run from that room outside.
I meant, I thought he had said something about the service entrance or whatever, the capacity, what we're talking about or, I don't know. I just want to double check maybe.
Yeah, I'll double check on that.
Because if there had to be, then you'd want to incorporate that, whatever dollar amount that they might be talking about with something to do with that.
Yep.
To connect the dots.
There was also something else that John had pointed out to us and that is that I believe as it was proposed and to where we were at, it did not include the setting of the tank, the running of the gas line, where that's going to be, et cetera, et cetera. So, there are other costs still to be, yeah, pending on this.
Yep. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Norwich Solar Invoices Account Review. Brendan, you taking that? Or is there somebody here for that?
We have the accountant, Ms. Hamley.
I didn't make copies for everybody. I'm hoping that you were able to review it on the agenda. We entered, all of this happened before my time, so I've done a lot of research on this. We entered an agreement with Norwich by which, and this was twenty nineteen is when some of the paperwork was signed. And there was a land lease agreement where they were going to pay us for the lease of town land. And that spelled out in the contract how that's going to go. And then they were, they were granted permission via a solar energy agreement to build solar, put solar panels on build solar, put solar panels on and and just build a solar energy area with the promise of our being able to save 10% on our electricity. The question has come up in the meantime that we're paying Green Mountain Power and we're paying Norwich Technologies, or actually, we haven't paid them anything, but we've been invoiced. And bottom line, the only thing that we are paying to Green Mountain Power are the state and federal mandated fees. The the solar energy power that we have generated off of that field, that has been generated off of that field, has paid for all of the electricity that we have used. Okay? Now, it's actually, in some cases, paid more. We've got a bank of energy usage that we can use.
And those are called credits, correct? Yes?
Technically, yes.
Okay.
That would be the simple term for it. So anyway, then um then we have Norwich, and Norwich is billing us for 90% of the solar power that we use. Okay? So, and and again, the excess is going into the bank. So, Green Mountain Power's invoices have on it a definition, they spell it all out. They have a listing and an accounting of exactly how things are calculated. Okay? It tells you how much, this was on the paperwork, it tells you how much we generated, it tells you how much we used. And then if you go on the backside, then you can see that Green Mountain Power is still getting their fees. And in this particular case, we had a credit that exceeded our usage. After number of hours of calculating and figuring out how things were going and how things were calculated, it was kind of a complex mess, but they, Norwich, I truly believe Norwich is billing us accurately, that we are saving the 10%, and um I I believe that it's well documented by Green Mountain Power. And that's pretty much it. We're we're only paying Green Mountain Power for the fees, we're paying Norwich 90% of our usage, and we're saving 10%. Some might think that 10% isn't a lot, and believe me, if you calculated it out, it really doesn't seem like a lot. But we also have the added benefit that we're going to agree.
We we also have the land lease payments.
Absolutely.
And and your name is?
Deborah.
Deborah? And you work for who?
The town.
Us. I know, but we, but she, I think this is the first time she's been here. I know who she is. I'm just kind of trying to introduce her to everybody else.
That's a smooth way of doing it.
Okay, go.
And Deborah, you may have answered this for me already. Those state and federal fees, are those because we're in a deal with Norwich or?
No.
Okay, so those would have been applied with or without this agreement in place? Okay.
It's part of Green Mountain Power. I have a question. How much is the credit right now?
I haven't added them all up, but there's one, because we have multiple accounts, there's one account that has an excess of $2,300, or 2,300 kilowatts, I should say.
Let's quantify this, though. Let's let's, because there's a lot of questions here. This isn't, this isn't as easy as what it sounded. For those of us that have been here from the very beginning, including me, and I know you might.
Thank you.
So, when, are you gonna, what do you want to do now? You're the chair.
Go ahead with your question.
Okay, I've got a few questions. So if you go on page one, which is the very first thing, um, well, I was here from the very beginning, and although the contract says that the town of Weathersfield promised to receive 16% of the of the 500,000 kilowatts that this array was supposed to produce annually, that number is new to me, okay? And I usually watch documents really close. So that means that the town promised to buy 80,000 kilowatt units in a year. That's what the contract says.
Can I can I can I interject right there for real quick, for just one little second? That sentence says the total amount of solar power generated, and even though it's a 500-kilowatt generating facility, doesn't mean it's generating 500 kilowatts.
500,000.
Well, i- it's not a fix. It it doesn't do that every day.
No, 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 annually. I meant, I said annually. But that's what, that's what a five-acre site should do. And I'm sure they took variables. I'm sure they took some sunny day, some not sunny, whatever it was. And I see they've got the word generated highlighted for a reason. That means they get a lot of wiggle room in there. So, I don't know, Sven was at least the interim town manager at the time, and he's the one that signed the document. He must have done this. He must have taken our 11 meters and he must have calculated out somehow what the town used for power through kilowatt-hours. That's the only thing I can think of. Because why would you promise to buy more than what the town used? You wouldn't do that. And we'd never get put in a corner to do that either. We wouldn't promise to use power that we weren't gonna. So, that is a surprise to me. That was not in the proposal that we were given from Norwich or anybody else that decided to come in here from from any way about that proposal. What was given to us was an $11,000 lease agreement for 25 years to rent the land at the highway site. In addition to that, it was a 10% credit to the power that we used on on these individual meters. So that we would get our bill, in fact, we've gotten our bill, and I know the treasurer has paid these bills, so we've paid our monthly usage all along here on each of the meters. And I know, I thought it would be as simple as getting our Green Mountain Power bill and seeing that we used, for instance, 1,000 kilowatt-hours in a month on a particular meter, and that we would see that we would have to pay for 90%, whatever the price was. It was going to be that easy. It wasn't this, give me $20,000 upfront, which is what this demand is for. We got a bill out of nowhere for, and it was more, I would take issue, and I don't mean to pick on the office, but that number was corrected by the town manager because it was more than what this was. You spent hours trying to do it. You notified us that they were off initially.
Initially, and now everything, they worked with GMP to correct it, and it is 9,228.89, and we currently owe 17,736.85.
But but I'm scratching my head, saying, how do we owe that kind of money upfront? Because, and let me get to this other point. So we we got this other surprise in the presentation that was given to us by the person at Norwich, saying, you can have all the the energy credits you want to, if you don't use them in the calendar year, they're gone.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's a really bad picture. Because I don't care how far the meter is spinning. That means that you don't have a bank.
Okay, you have the bank for for 12 months.
Well, no, that means that that the person that financed the system gets the benefit of the power to go somewhere else, and we pay for it. We're paying for these credits and not using them.
And, you know, last year we used 126,431 kilowatt-hours.
How many?
We spent 126,431.
136,000?
126,000, yeah.
Okay, so that just blew out my theory about how did we get to 16% of this 500K system?
And we spent 31,151.29. These bills are coming in between April and December, and we currently owe 17,000, you're saying?
What was the total dollar amount?
It does seem consistent.
Yeah, but they're fronting us. They're asking to come up with all of our money now, and they're hoping that we're gonna continue to use electric. What if we get crafty and we don't have to use the electric? I don't know, I'm just saying.
Earn it for 25 years.
Put in our own solar.
No, I don't know. But but it wasn't just refusing when it was proposed.
Oh, no, not even, not even close. And there's another aspect, and I know you're gonna get to it sooner or later, and I'm gonna jump right into it now, and that's the added cost. She's already brought up, Deborah's already brought up, that that's happening here and elsewhere, that I'm sure is getting paid from something.
By the hour.
Paul?
Now, one of the things from our presentation before was the fact that those credits, if you look at how they're set up there, there are different amounts for the different meters that we have. I think, what do we have, seven meters on this?
I think there's 11.
Maybe 11, I'm sorry. That 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 number sounds better, actually. But what you can do is manipulate where those credits go so that you, so if you're, let's say you get into this a year and you find out, well, yeah, I've got a whole bunch up here that I'm wasting, but down here, I ended up paying some, you can move some of that over. And that's the thing, you've got to play this little shell game of where those are gonna go. And um, so that that's also an option for those credits, not to lose them. You might the first year, but you're gonna be able to manipulate that and move that. And I don't know how often you can change that or when you can do that, but.
Norwich says they do that automatically.
Who does?
Norwich. Tim Harrison.
Norwich has informed me that actually we're about due for another evaluation based on what we've used throughout the course of the year, and then they re, you know, reevaluate what we use, what we need, and what our percentages are gonna be.
I would think that would be due about the 415, that would be a year. Brendan, what was the dollar amount you said we spent previously?
31,000.
Just 31,000 roughly?
Uh, yeah, I can pull it back up.
Well, what I'm getting at is, is we're 415 through 14, we're 2, 26 now, so, and we're 17.7. So we're just a little over 50%.
No, that's the money that's still owed. But we've paid all, ask Steve, we've paid all of our GMP bills. We continue to pay them. So it's not like we'd have to front Norwich the money and then they pay our bill for us. No, no, no. We've been paying the power bill all along.
We've been paying that power bill like that?
We've only been paying the state and the federal.
Taxes.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, if you look at the the second page of my report, the amount of the bill that's due is the 45.82, and if you look up at the fee structure, the fee charges, that's 45.82. That's all we pay to Green Mountain Power.
So we haven't written like $17,000 worth of checks to Green Mountain Power?
Correct.
So how has, how has the power company gotten paid?
Through Norwich.
Solar.
Yeah, Norwich is supplying energy to the grid.
Yeah, but they can't do that for free because we don't own the project. So there's an outstanding invoice due to Norwich that they've been paying the power.
We haven't paid this.
Have we used $17,000 worth of electricity since this thing started?
Yeah.
From the meters? And I don't know how we get out of the bill, because the bill is what it is. So you'd be paying $17,000 without, let's pretend you didn't have the solar system at all.
Yes.
You'd have to spend more, actually.
Yeah, we would, we would have paid more.
19,000.
Yeah, after she's completed her reconciliation and and we sat, I mean, but you know, they did bill us initially a large chunk at once, and we hadn't received our credits yet, and this all happened in September.
Yes.
So we've only been doing this for a couple of months, and now that the accountant has had her opportunity to reconcile this, which took quite a bit of time, because it was messy, like she was saying, but now she has a system in place, and I think you'll be able to monitor and track this.
Yes.
So, how how much time do you think, now that you have your system built, do you think it will take you each month to reconcile GMP and Norwich?
Obviously, I haven't been here all that long, but um with 11 accounts, it's just as the bills come in, I just need to plug in the numbers, plug in the numbers in the spreadsheet.
Yep.
And if there's a right plan, then we can.
So you've done this long enough to know, is it possible that the credits will not be worth it because they would generate more than what we would use and then actually it'd be a big waste of time?
Evaporate.
Well, the the credit's gonna evaporate if you don't use them. Is that, is it possible?
It depend, it depend.
What was that?
Within 12 months.
Yes.
Yeah, we have, we have 12 months and according, I mean, I think we need, you know, we're in this agreement and we should let it run its course, but I mean, we're, if we're receiving a bank of credits and then we use them during the winter time when it's not producing as much electricity, as long as it balances over the year.
When is, when is your 12 months up? 1231 or is it 415 when it started to go wrong?
415 would be 12 months of doing this.
Well, but I got, I've got a question concern concerning those credits. Are you from Norwich or?
I'm not from Green Mountain Power, but I have the two group solar panels generating that we go ahead and allocate to another property of ours. So I'm quite familiar with.
What's going on?
Green Mountain Power and, but ours was some common.
Okay, well, here's my question, and maybe you can answer it, maybe you can't. If not, then it's something maybe we need to look into. Is it a cutoff, is it an annual cutoff or is it just a la, that that 13th month, like when you get out of the year, is that just this month falls off and you and now you're looking at this block? Or does it actually gets to a point and they say, gone? Or, that's what they do? It it just, it's a, it's a fixed annual fiscal year, and at the end of the fiscal year, whatever it is, if you haven't used it, it's gone.
Right. So the thing is, the allocation, um, there's an allocation form that has to be submitted. There's only three times within that 12-month period that you're allowed to make any changes from Green Mountain Power. So I don't know if Norwich is doing that, but it also depends whether your Green Mountain Power account is under Weathersfield, Town of Weathersfield. So if Norwich has control over the Green Mountain Power account, then they're doing the allocation. Somebody has to be doing the allocations.
Do you know who that is, Brendan?
I believe it's Norwich Solar.
And who, where's our oversight on that?
Our accountant.
So here's my fear, or it's a concern, okay, it's not a fear. As power continues, the costs continue to grow, and they're going to grow. Okay? Look at New Hampshire, the two biggest power sources raised their rates 45% in one year. The 10% amount of money will also grow. So if you're paying, if you're paying like 28 cents a kilowatt-hour or whatever, whatever anybody's doing, and then next year's gonna be 34 or something like that, it's gonna be 3.4 instead of 2.8.
Yes.
So my question is, is this really worth it? And the answer to that question will be, I think the way things are revolving are that you can throw out the chart, the escalator chart for growth because of what's going on in reality. So there had to be a chart somewhere in the, in the very concept of this, saying, this is what the rates are going to be for 25 years, an estimate, similar to what they do at the school, when they try to project out enrollment. I think that's probably out the window, because no one could anticipate 8.7% inflation.
Are are the credits that we receive, they're based on a percentage and converted to dollar amount, correct? Is that what I saw here?
It's kilowatt-hours that is applied to, like, if we use 100 kilowatt-hours, we get the credit, the solar credit of 100 kilowatt-hours to pay for whatever those charges would have been. So Green Mountain Power, in in the case of the question, Green Mountain Power is the one that changes the rates.
But but, but the contract was created on a percentage basis.
Correct.
So as, what I'm getting at is, as price rises, the percentage factors into that, doesn't it? As 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 the credits are applied.
Percentage won't change, but the money will.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
My understanding is, if I use $1,000 worth of electricity, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna pay 900 bucks. I'm getting 10% off. If I'm still using the same amount of kilowatts, if it takes 100,000 kilowatts to run the town, I'm only gonna pay for 90,000 kilowatts. I'm getting 10% off. Doesn't matter what the rate is, because I'm using kilowatts.
Okay, but there's still another factor there, and this is where part of that is, and that is that you started at 1,000, I used 1,000. Well, if if we generated 1,100, then you have, you still have an extra 100 kilowatts that that are there, and how, and that's, that's the credits?
That goes into the bank. So like if that 1,000 kilowatts is is generated during the summer months when we don't use as much, then during the winter months when we've got our heaters turned up, we might not be generating as much, plus the sun's not out, we might not be generating as much if we use that bank.
Correct. So so that's when it comes out of that. But again, it's all, it all starts on a percentage basis, so even as the dollar amounts go up for the cost.
Right.
Plus part of the, plus part of the contract, and it's, and we're gonna be held to it, is that we contractually obligated to purchase.
Yes, 16%.
16% of the output of the system. And I, now I'm beginning to.
Now, that's gonna show up at the end when they do the bank, because if you're only at 14%, they're gonna say, wait a minute, we get 16.
That's exactly right. And when they fronted the money and they said, here's your new bill.
Right, yeah.
I don't think that will be a problem, though, because we're using 126,000 kilowatt-hours.
Right, exactly.
So.
Exactly. And when you just do the math, it's 16% of 500,000. I don't think that system's gonna put out 600, because it's built for 500.
Yep.
It can't.
And it was based on 500,000.
That's exactly right. See, I was trying to wrestle with the idea, outside of calling Sven, how did anybody come up with 16%? I thought they measured it under the usage of the meters that we had.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, exactly, just averaging it out.
Which would be 80,000 kilowatts, okay? What do we use? And I guess that's not true, because he's saying we use 120.
Yes.
Okay. So where are we at with this? That's more of an update and a lesson for us. We're, I I'm starting to feel I'm getting a little closer to understanding it, necessarily.
Well, the only question was, is it worth it for us? We've been talking about it for two or three months, and would we be happy to notify them saying, you know what, I'm sorry, we love this plan, but we don't love it, and we just want our lease payment for the five acres?
Yep.
That was the question.
And then, you know, on the next warrant, we're gonna have to put the $17,000 on there in Norwich.
But that would be out of the last year's electricity line in the budget, correct?
No.
No. Pause for the question.
We're gonna be paying for.
Well, I'm interested, but where's the money coming from?
The general fund. We budgeted under electricity.
That's what I just said.
Part of those electricity waters are under expended because we haven't been paying Norwich, so we haven't been paying for a full usage.
Okay, that's all I was asking, and that's what I thought, Paul.
Just quick, I'm, I'm not opposed to what Dave was saying, the only problem is, we have a contract.
Yeah.
And and we can say we don't want to, but that doesn't mean anybody else is gonna say they don't want to.
And and then there's a whole other expense.
So trying to understand where we're at and what we actually signed or the town signed is perfectly what we need to do and understand that. But um, I I, and who, and depending on who that contract is, we already know how negotiations and how things have gone with certain groups, so we need to.
I I'm looking at these numbers, listening to Brendan, I'm listening to Dave too, and and you, but um, in in my head, I'm thinking, this may take a year or two for us to actually look at and see what's going on before we really.
Yeah.
Have a grasp on it.
But but we just heard Brendan say it's the next warrant, it's gonna be a bill.
Yeah.
Well, you.
It is, but I I, it it's signed, it's there, it's a contract, that's what we got right now, so.
We would have spent this amount, well, we wouldn't have paid for the charges between April and June 30th, though. And they did bill us back to April.
Can you just, can we leave it like this? Can you just make sure that it's really clear and then give it to us before the meeting?
Yep.
To see?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I.
So I see what, I see what you're saying. So from 415 to 630, which is the year end.
Yes.
It's pretty important.
Yes.
Yeah, we're being billed for electricity that we didn't budget for this fiscal year.
Yes, and then the July 1st was the new year.
Right. I got it. Yep. Okay.
Depending on when your payments are, you may not pay for the electricity you use, generated between 415 and 630 in 2023.
Yep.
Until fiscal year '24.
And we'll also have excess credits, I think, though, because now we're gonna have credits from last year and this year's budget, so what will we be able to use on?
Unless they lose. Unless they lose them on us.
I'm sorry, but I thought we lost the credits, we didn't use them in a year's time, a cycle. So I, watch that statement, I don't know how that'll, if that's true or not.
Maybe they can give us to all of us.
I want credits.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so we're all set with this one for tonight? Thank you, Deborah, very much for helping out with this. Like I said, I'm starting to feel like I'm understanding it a little better. Ferry Road Discussion.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You too, Brandon, thank you as well.
Nice meeting you.
Yeah.
Ferry Road Discussion, is that you, Ray, or is this Brandon?
Uh, Ray.
Hello, so Ferry Road is a town road in Weathersfield, it's point-eight-two miles long. At this time, it's classified as a class-three. I believe there was a mistake made years ago when they classified the road. It was supposed to be class-three beyond the first house, and then be a class-four from there out to the river. I need to bring it to the board to be aware of it, because it's been maintained as a class-four for decades. It's basically an agricultural road. A lot of people, all the firms that have fields down there, use chopping corn, we have a business down there, Skyline Nursery. So the board needs to decide if they're gonna tell me to start maintaining it as a class-three road, which is rebuild it and get it rebuilt to where it's supposed to be the standard and plow it year-round, or if we're gonna reclassify it. And if you want to reclassify it, you need to have hearings, public hearings. You can't just reclassify it. So that's it.
So two questions. One, how did, how did this just come up? Did it just come up, or is there something that's been on your radar?
I don't know about it for a while, but it was just as Ed was leaving, Sven was here, I talked to Sven about it. He left, Brandon started, COVID hit. So now, we really need to address this.
Okay.
It's something that's been put on the back-
It's only, it's point-eight-two miles worth that you're interested in?
It's, the whole road is point-eight-two miles long. There's going to be a measurement from the road to wherever we decide, if the board decides to go that route, to where the turnaround would be for a plow truck, or how long of a class-three road you wanna have.
All right.
That's a whole discussion that you need to have through hearings.
And I was just gonna let the board know, they can check this out if they want, but the Vermont State statute, so Title nineteen, Chapter three oh two, talks about class of roads and stuff. And Item three, it's class-three town highways, and basically says, because right now, it's classified as a class-three highway, and we're not keeping it up to the standard that's in this bylaw-
Correct.
Right here, okay?
We do limited maintenance on it, just to help the ag trucks.
Yeah, because it's class-three, it's supposed to have a nice base, it's supposed to be kept up for winter, it's supposed to be done, all that. So anyways, so subsection C of this says, "A highway not meeting these standards may be reclassified as a provisional class-three highway if within five years of the determination it will meet all class-three highway standards." I don't know if that needs any kind of town vote or anything, or if that's something that we can do.
To classify any road, you have to have hearings. So if you're gonna reclassify it as a conditional class-three, you still have to go through the hearing process. If the town wants to keep it as a class-three road, or make it a class-three.
All right, because that's what I was checking, because if that was something that we could do, knowing, and it would give us some time to decide, because if it was right now, we're not meeting that. So we need to-
The other, the other thing, I don't wanna get too much into it, but there has been other complaints in the area about it being used. In the spring, people go down there in four-wheel with their vehicles. There's been trash thrown out, there's been drug use, there's been illegal camp, people camping illegally. A vehicle stolen, brought down there and caught on fire, jackin' deer. There's a bunch of issues that I've been asked by people off and on over the last few years, if the town could put a gate up. The town cannot block a town road, period. The only road you can put a gate on is a pent road, and it has to be unlocked.
Mike, if I can, so on that note, is that the only road you're getting complaints about with those kind of things?
There's other, this is the only road that I've actually, it's point-eight-two miles, it's a wonderful-
No, no, what I'm getting at is, I hear people tell me all the time, they wanna get on a road just down here, because people go down by the river and do this, and somebody's taking canoes and doing all- that's not the only road that has this problem, correct? Okay, so-
I think it's a good time to address all the issues and discuss it all at once, if you decide to have the hearings.
That's not bad for that road, I'm just saying, it's not the only road in town that's having these issues on. But second, my second part of that is, how much would it cost, do you feel, to bring that up to a class-three road?
Probably a lot. Your target's silt-based right now. You'd have to have eighteen inches of fill just to start, and then up to six inches, four to six inches gravel on top.
Well, yeah.
What is your recommendation? Do it to a class-four?
Me?
Yeah.
I recommend having the hearings, getting public input, and trying to work with the people that own the property to see what-
But once we go into the hearings, though, we're kinda headed in a direction, aren't we? Do you have a recommendation as the highway superintendent?
I recommend that it's not a class-three road. I'll go that far.
Okay.
So class, you want a class-one road?
He wants a eight-watt tar.
Well, I'm sorry, I know I've been a little chipper here, but my point is, you just made a recommendation it's not a class-three, so what does that mean to us? I need to know-
It's a class-three road.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
We're gonna make it a three-and-a-half.
And we'll need, and we'll need a cost if we're gonna do that, too, because people are gonna ask, what would be the difference?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry, Ray, I am taking it seriously.
Me too.
No, I just, I can't. My focus is, what do I need to do with the road? Do I need to maintain, I should be maintaining it as class-three, I don't want the state coming back and asking for all their money back-
Absolutely.
For thirteen-hundred dollars a year. So I just need to bring it up to you guys.
Dave?
We have a road policy beyond what says in the state, as far as our classifications and specifications. So it's like eighteen inches of gravel, eight inches more of top gravel, so you get twenty-six inches of gravel for this. It also speaks to culverts, anything that do paint. There's a process to do this, but I think, I think you're right, Paul, or somebody who said, where are you gonna, where does the process lead to? So the first thing that comes to my mind, because I've been involved in a bunch of roads, and I don't know if you have, or couple, you have to get land use involved, or somebody has to identify all and every legal landowner on the road, both sides. They have to be certified mail, so they have proper notice of what the intent is to do. If it drop, I'm not aware of bringing like a class-three road, for instance, to a trail all at once. I have been involved with, step by step, going from either three to four, class-four, which is a non-maintained town right-of-way. So you still have the right-of-way intact, and still are obligated to take care of the drainage of the existing culverts. Not, don't have to put new ones in. As opposed, but you're right, you cannot block any motorized traffic on a three or four. You can also go down to what's classified as a trail, which narrows the right-of-way, doesn't?
No, the right-of-way stays the same. You can't narrow it less than three rods, that's a mistake.
But the, yeah, but we have our own set of town ones. The trail definition also prohibits, at least, I think in the town, motorized vehicles.
So that excludes all the farm vehicles in that town.
Could it, can it be gated?
A trail can be gated, but you're blocking, it's permanent gate, it's blocked to all motorized vehicles.
But the town could contemplate giving it all up.
Correct. So the only way you're gonna address the issues that have been brought to me from some of the landowners, I've talked to all of them, I've only talked to a few. That's why I think the hearings are important, I don't wanna go too deep into this, is the only way to resolve the issues with the four-wheel-drive trucks going down there mudding and trash and drugs and everything else is a gate. The only legal way to gate it is if it's private. That's, that's what it boils down to. So as me, as a town, if you wanna make it a class-four road, that's fine, we'll maintain it, we'll keep it up as a class-four road and do our best. That's what we've been doing with it. But we at least have to address that issue, so we're getting paid properly from the state, and we're not knowingly frauding the state.
So we could move into a hearing process that states that we're reconsidering the designation of a class-three road without actually saying, what, we're gonna make it at this time? And use the, what you're saying is, use the private hearing areas-
Decide what to do with it.
To get where you wanna get to.
Correct. You don't say, we're gonna make it a class-four road, and we're gonna hear it and do that. You have a class, you have a hearing, you get all the information from everybody, you get all the input, and then make a decision based on that discussion of what you're gonna do with the road.
I don't know if that would be an official hearing then, I'm sorry, I think that would be more like a roundtable. Because if you open a hearing, you have a hearing, you gotta have evidence, you gotta have stuff presented.
You have to, it's also not, you have three hearings.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's three hearings.
But you gotta have an outcome on that, it's not just to see what we're gonna do.
You gotta allow time for somebody to comment that may not be able to make it.
You probably have three hearings and say, at the end of it, we don't want it to be a class-three road.
Right, yeah.
It's a class-three, you don't know.
Yeah.
You're having a hearing to reclassify it.
But, but we can start the process with the-
I think it's probably smart not to want a hearing yet, but rather to, well, maybe some of them are here, maybe they'd love to comment about owners. But you need to be able to gather all of them, and I mean, the certified copy.
Yep.
You can't make a decision at all, like, other than-
Oh, I know that. Is there anybody here that's, that's-
So, here.
There we go.
There's a few of them.
And we have a letter in our pocket, too.
I'm Dan Stevens, my father's the landlord, he was able to come to ask me to, yes, we need to come to see what was going on. He was under the impression a gate could be put up, I'm hearing that that's not an option. It's not a road that's used by anything practical at all, except for maybe, maybe some recreation. I don't know if the folks are familiar with the Ferry Road. It's great, in Weathersfield, well. I mean, you guys are talking about class-three, class-four, I wouldn't bring a car down there most times of the year. I mean, all the way, it's not gonna get, I mean, it's just not practical.
Poor fucking truck.
Thank you for saying that, I was trying to avoid it.
I'm just here really listening, but I, there's a lot of human bad things that go down, that go on. I know that when I was a youngster, I could go down there on my bike. I know that I would never let my son go down there on his bike, I don't know if that matters, but I just, things have changed. It's, it's not gonna seem that.
Anybody else?
I live right at the base of Ferry Road, I have the old schoolhouse there.
And your name is?
Daniel Smith. And I completely agree with your statements, I mean, I grew up down there, so I love my bike, but there, there's people who've been camping there, people have come to my house, opened my door, asked me to use my phone, asked me for rides. And also, I called in, the car that was burning, it was someone else who was driving down there who stopped at my house to tell me that the car was burning. Someone who goes down there regularly, I talked to the state police about this. And my security camera's up at my house now. And I personally, my, the access to my own house, I don't know how that would be classified, but I don't really think it needs too much more done to it. It's dirt right now, and then after that, there's a hill that goes down, and that's where your issues are. And of course, I mean, all the business that goes on down there, that needs to keep going on. But I know we're having these problems other places, too.
Anyone else?
I'm on-
You don't live down there?
No, but there's a safety feature that's got a, we got a town dump down there right now, on somebody else's property. Yes, we went down there for the stolen car that lit on fire and all that stuff. Remember when Chief Daniels first started, there was a rape that happened there? We went down there with the state police three times that, the city. The day after the fire, we took a long walk down there looking for some stuff. And I feel bad for the owners, because there's a huge pile of trash. And, you know, you got beds, you got couches, you've got everything under the sun. And then, if you go down to by the river, off to the left, they cut it all up, they've got a campground down there. On our way down, I got two phone calls from the police, that there might have been a couple of bodies in that car because of what was going on. So it's just not a safe place down there.
And again, there, no decisions can be made, that's why I emphasize that.
Yeah, that's why I'm just listening.
But there's, obviously, there's an interest in discussing it.
Can you hear me?
There's somebody online.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello? I'm the owner of the property at the farthest end along the river. My name is Suzanne Carricker Voight. It's been in my family for over two-hundred years. I do not, obviously, live in Weathersfield, however, it's a property that means a tremendous amount to us. I can tell you that fifty years ago, that road was beautifully maintained. And it's only been in the last about twenty to twenty-five years that you couldn't get any kind of vehicle down there. I used to ride my bike down there with no problem. There, I don't know why the road has become non-maintained, and I have empathy for that. I live in a very rural area where I am, I farm, I'm not ignorant to the issues. But I, I do think there's history there, there's, I don't think by making it a private, you're gonna stop some of the issues. And I certainly don't like having to go down there and clean up the trash, and I'm horrified at some of the things that have taken place down there. But I'm wondering if cameras and notifying and getting a little more police patrol down there might do something. Because it didn't used to happen.
Quick, that was one of the questions I was gonna ask, is, right now, you're trying to keep it as a class-four, even though it's-
I'm not trying, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to do anything other than to make it-
Thank you, Steve.
Classified to what it's going to be maintained as. That's my only goal.
No, but what have you been doing so far with it?
I was under the assumption it was a class-four all these years.
So you've been doing whatever you needed to do to keep it as a class-four road?
Sometimes the farmers would call and say, hey, we're hauling corn.
Right, so, so, but we found out now that it's a class-three. So if we had hearings and we whatever and decided to go to a class-four road, it's not gonna be any different than what we got, and you're not gonna fix anything that is already going on. So what needs to happen, or needs to look at happening, is to maybe even farther declassify it, like Dave was saying, a trail or something. But even then, if we did that and said, no, it's not, we're not doing anything with it, not even gonna keep up, is it gonna keep anybody from going down there?
If it's a trail, it's gonna keep everybody from going down there. No motorized vehicles are allowed.
How is it gonna, how is it gonna, no more vehicles allowed? But yet, everything I just heard that's illegal that's going on is illegal, and that's still going on.
Because with a trail, you can put a gate up, and no motorized vehicles are allowed on a trail.
Okay, so the trail, we can do that on?
Correct.
But how did the farm vehicles get down?
They don't, that's the point.
Well, we have to go down there to farm.
Right.
You can't, you can't have a lock for that, that the landlords have access to, you can't-
You legally can't use a trail for motorized vehicles, period.
So you wouldn't even be able to put a, you wouldn't even be able to put a farm tractor on it, then?
Correct. Legally, that's, that's the, that's the catch-twenty-two of this whole thing. I can't, you can't make it a class-four and put a gate up and have these guys have a key, because that'd be an easy fix. But you can't legally, you cannot walk the road.
But you can if it's private.
Go ahead, if it's private, yes.
Is there, is there anything other than the road on the road, so are there power lines? Nothing?
No.
Good, because that would mean that they would also have a right-of-way.
Correct, okay.
So is there only the one farm down there, Suzanne?
We own the end, which is only about sixty acres, sixty-five acres, and then the Stevens have fields, and you have the nursery. So I think there's four landowners that are affected, and it's only fine.
But if it went back to being private, and the four landowners got together and put a gate up, and y'all had your own keys and chains and whatnot, then you could, then it wouldn't be classified as something that outlaws a tractor. You guys would maintain the gate and shut it down yourselves.
And we'd have the expense of maintaining that road, we'd have the liability of anybody who did decide to avoid that, go into the gate. It puts everything onus on us, and it, without any compensation financially, we pay a lot in taxes. And we expect a certain level from the town. And who, how are the police gonna get down there when the kid goes around, or whoever goes around the gate and does something, starts a fire, goes camping, other horrific things? The police won't even be able to get through.
Those are all things that need to be discussed at a hearing, I believe.
Yeah, I start, I think we're starting to get-
We do have, we do have private roads that actually speak to every point that you just raised. That is the reason why Acea Grouse Road, they had a number of people on that road, they petitioned the town to have the town take over. Happened down on Drummond Road, I mean, people, generally speaking, do the opposite. They're seeking the towns because they're paying taxes, because they want that, that service done for that road. It's pretty rare to have one given up. Like, I don't even know if it's happened here. I know we've moved roads-
We gave up here and there. It's a trail now. We can give it up, I'm sorry, it's a trail.
Okay.
That's why there's a gate across it.
How long is that road?
That's only about an eight-hundred-foot stretch.
Yeah, I mean, that's a whole different ballgame.
It turned it from being a through-road to being a dead-end road, though. And there's houses on that road.
But the, but the struggle is real with police, with ambulance, with fire on private roads, it's definitely-
And it's up to the homeowners, if they wanna- And it's up to the homeowners. If they want to get a key to the, to the emergency services, the police and the fire can have a key. If not, then they have to, yeah. And if, honestly, the homeowners are responsible already, unless it happens in the right way.
I heard the, I heard the.
If anything happens on their private property, they're still responsible.
I heard the, the, the comment, dump, trash, whatnot. I'm asking the town manager if he could get land use to take a look at that. I mean, I'm.
Yeah, that's already, I wrote that down.
We have language, we have language that identifies violations.
I think it's a health officer issue.
Well.
Could be.
Well, yeah, but, but, but I, I don't think it's the, the person that owns the property that's doing the dumping.
No, it's not.
Right, it's just, no, it's just, it's random.
Oh, okay. No, no, it's, it's an, it, it's so, it is, it's illegal dumping is what we should be calling it. It's an, it's illegal dumping, and it happens other places, too.
A landowner could be illegally dumping, too, but I don't think that's what's being said. I think it's just random.
No, it's other people coming in. That's on the property, and that was like their. No, no, it's not. No, no, no.
Who currently takes the illegal dumping to the transfer station?
I heard her say that she was cleaning it up. Suzanne?
I didn't know what was taking place over there until just now.
Okay.
We go in and clean it up periodically. It's, and actually, in the last few years, there's been very little.
All right, so.
We put gates across accessing our fields from the road, and that has cut down a huge amount of problems. I don't know what the other landowners are doing, but just putting a gate where the breaks in the stone walls are has cut down a, a lot in our area.
But we can't put a gate on a Class 4 road, or a Class 3 road. We can't do that.
No, I'm saying across our own property.
Okay, but when I suggested converting it into a private road, so that you guys could do that, it didn't sound like you supported that strategy.
I think she stated they have holes in the walls and brick, and they're.
And that has.
Rocked, and they putting gates on their own private property, on their walls.
Yes, exactly.
Not on the road.
Go ahead, Paul.
So, so just quickly, I just, sorry, I was a little chipper with Ray on, on, thank you for bringing this up to us and getting it to us. But I guess to, to just, there's a lot of other stuff we want to get to here. But what, when, when do you, when could we have this discussion here that's? Because a lot of the stuff's already getting said, but we need to have that in a, in a, in a collective group that's, that's.
I hope the highway super and I put together a report with a timeline. Is that, will that work?
I, I think you're gonna need to work with the people that live down there, too, including Suzanne.
We gotta send certified letters and everything. If you guys have a cert.
Well, but I mean, we need to be clear of that. We gotta kind of come to an agreement on what direction we're going. To some degree, you know, what, what, I, I mean, it sounds like we've got a lot of problems down there. We need to, you know, they need to be identified. What's, what are the possible strategies? Go ahead, Greg.
We have, we have until we have to sign the document for mileage again next year. That's my deadline. I'd like to have this resolved.
Which we just, we signed a week ago, so we.
Right, we have a year.
Well, two, three weeks.
I wouldn't doubt it on, honestly.
Yeah, I'm Ken Young. I use the Carricker property way down at the end.
Yep.
And I've talked with all the landowners on both sides, and it's pretty overwhelming. And I've got some letters of people that can be here if you'd like a copy. That they'd like it made private so we can gate it, because if it's been, we assumed it was Class 3. If it's, I mean, it was always Class 4. If it's been Class 3, with all due respect, it's really been neglected for a Class 3 road, because you could scrape up all the gravel on the whole road. You wouldn't get 28 inches of gravel. So, the dumping is kind of secondary to the safety situations that the landowners have. There are, there are people in the bowl that will no longer allow the people, their kids. Like Bob Stevens at the end of the road, he won't let his wife walk, walk the dog down there. There's been some ugly things that has happened that Aaron has made reference to, and I'm sure that are on record over the years. There's just some people down there that are not safe. And the only reason someone needs to be down there with a vehicle is if they're hauling agricultural products in or out. And the road, usually, once a year, the town will grade it. Other than that, the landlord's been maintaining it anyways. Usually, if it's.
I have to, I have to interject that by historical law, that road actually has a primitive camping site at the end. It was the ferry road to the ferry crossing to Clermont. And that's why it was always a town road and not a private road. We've, we've got some things and issues with the state on that that will have to be addressed. There's also the fact that three or four of the fields are under the Upper Valley Land Trust. They're the guarantors of the land, so they need to be involved in this discussion as well.
Yeah, we can handle all of that when we move into some sort of decision.
Thank you, Suzanne. That's, that was good information.
Yes, absolutely. Greg.
And I, I just think that maybe a discussion would be a good idea before you get into what direction you're going. To have a more landowner discussion to find out what direction we really want to go in.
You're back.
Yeah, sorry. So the whole theory about the three hearings and all the discussions is to get all that information, so you can make a decision based on that information.
But I think that the hearing, the very first one, if we choose to have one, needs to state the purpose. Right.
Yeah, it does.
So that's the problem.
To discuss the.
Well, not to discuss.
No, no, you have to.
It would say, I'm just fictitiously putting this out there, that we change the classification of ferry road from Class 3 to something. That would be the hearing title. So I don't want to get that far, because I'm listening to.
But that does not mean you have to take it and make it.
Well, well, that's true. That's true. You can, you can, you can warn the hearing for, for, to, to convert it to a, a trail, or to convert it to a Class 4 road. And, and.
Absolutely.
And, and do nothing. That's correct.
Brandon and I can work on this way. If you'd like to report for the next meeting, we can figure it out.
Well, I also, I'm also, there's, there's one, two, three, four? There's four other landowners in the room, and Suzanne.
Who do you want to poll?
And, well, I think I've already got it. I, I've got, I've got four people in, well, I'm not sure. I've heard from this gentleman over here.
My name's Hugh Stevens. I own the lower portion of Ferry Road.
And that's, that's your, that's your son? Oh, cousin.
Different, different parcels of land, same family, but.
Okay.
Deluded. So we have a gate, and it has excluded pretty much all problems. That we have all kinds of people that walk down there, cross-country skiing, bicycle, et cetera. But we keep our gate closed for motorized traffic. It's worked wonderfully. I've always been sort of opposed to gating off the road in general, through the entire road. But things have changed a lot from 25 or 30, whatever, years ago. The type of activities down there, and quite honestly, the, the stuff that happens is a lot more worrisome to me than what it was when I was a young kid and, you know, growing up around the area. So, you know, keeping, keeping the riffraff, so to speak, out of there, I think would solve a lot of problems, but I'm learning tonight that I didn't know anything about the classification exactly of the road. And, and I'm learning tonight that it may not be as simple as putting up a gate. My initial concern coming here was more the location of the gate, and how that would be, how that would be maintained, and what, you know, circumstances having a gate might create. So, the dumping problem has been an issue for years and years. We don't have a particular problem beyond our gate, but other places where we order the road, we've had a real problem. In fact, we've had town gatherings on Greenup Bay and various other grounds over the years, where we've loaded a dump truck full of junk that's been thrown in this, this belly that was a common dumping area for years and years. And it's been a struggle to keep it from continuing to be that way. And at the end of the road, the Carrickers' property, same sort of situation, wherever it's most convenient, for somebody to have a mattress or a recliner or a sofa to back up with their truck and shove it off. That seems to be what is happening. So, and same thing with the belly, where we, I've actually had trash on our property that I've gone through, found a name, and called our chief, and given a name, address, phone number, et cetera, of garbage that was left at our property. That's the last thing I've heard of that. That's gone on a couple of different jobs over the years, where we've actually identified where trash.
And I, I thought there was a state law against littering, where they have you fined.
I don't want to keep it going, but just quickly, I'm sorry, what, you, you're, you're, yeah, but down by the river, or?
My name is Hugh Stevens.
Yeah, but whereabouts are you? On the ferry road?
Our property is on the lower end of Ferry Road between Carrickers and, I guess it would be.
Because you, you, you have a gate on Ferry Road right now?
Off of Ferry Road.
Off of Ferry.
Our property driveway is gated.
Okay. So nothing can get into your problem?
Exactly.
Awesome. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I, I, Brandon obviously has left, but here's kind of where I'm thinking we need to go. I, I'm thinking we're gonna need to have a meeting here ahead of a hearing to kind of get ourselves in, on direction, on point of where we're going. So, so, I think what we'll need to do is put this on the agenda as an act, not as an actionable item, but you know, something, a meeting that we're gonna have. Landowners can command, and we can start taking testimony, not testimony, but, you know, hear what you want. Try to identify these problems.
And we do have some letters that I'm assuming could just be submitted, so that could also.
Actually, all the letter, hang on to those letters. Those would actually be entered into evidence in the hearing.
That's, that's exactly where I was going. So maybe somebody can submit, give them to the town manager. If you've got copies of letters or something, let them have them now. I mean, why not?
Oh, yeah, 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 he can do that.
If anybody else wants to write letters, please do so, so we have all the information you can have.
So, so, so what I'm doing is wrapping this up.
Okay.
We're gonna put this on the, on an agenda. I don't know if it'll be the next agenda, or one more after that, but it seems like this is something we need to kind of really get our arms wrapped around.
Yeah, what we're gonna do itself is, and do you want us to notify everyone that lives on the road that the discussion is taking place?
That what's taking place?
That the discussion is taking place at the select.
Well, we're gonna, yeah, yeah, we're gonna put it on the agenda, and, and we're gonna, as I was saying, we're gonna gather the equipment. Ken, Ken has a list of letter, or some letters. He's gonna give them to you. Make sure you keep track of those, because those will be evidence going into the hearing.
Would you like copies of them?
Mike, somebody online would really like the letter read tonight.
Would like their red letter read tonight?
The letter that's being mentioned read.
There's several letters, so I, I think it's, I'm sorry.
Oh, go.
I think that it'd be best to save those for the hearing.
And, yeah, who is it that's online?
I asked the name, user, what, can you give your name? I already asked. They didn't give their name. And then Molly, previously, she mentioned what she kind of already mentioned, Mike. She said, "All future meetings to this nature needs to be directly and clearly communicated with landowners, with acknowledgement of our understanding of meetings and times to this nature." Thank you.
Well, and let's, let's be clear that the beginning, that these meetings to begin with are going to be about trying to figure out what to do. We're, we're not meeting to make a decision. We're trying, we're, we're meeting to make a decision on what direction to go, but we're not there yet. That'll happen from those meetings. So, that, that sound right, Dave?
And, and to be very, very clear, it's classification of the road 3 right now. We couldn't change it even if we wanted to. The policy requires three.
Three hearings.
Meet, three separate meetings, of which each is a hearing, so it would be at a minimum. That's after notifying every landowner by certified mail.
That's also.
We're talking like two months, that would take like two months.
Oh, this, this is gonna take more than that. This is gonna take.
No, I meant even if it was on a fast track. It's not, it's not, it's not possible.
And that's where I'm bringing you tonight, is we have time to get it done right.
Olivia, could you collect those letters and take a copy of those?
And, and did you get cleared, Olivia, you're, you're a busy girl. Did you get cleared up with the person online? They're okay?
If, 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 if I could, one quick thing while Olivia's grabbing those. For the person that's online, one of the letters that we're talking about is in the packet that's online right now. And these letters that just got handed to us now, even though we're not reading them, they're getting submitted in tonight, and I would like to have those in the minutes, so that people can read them going forward, since they were submitted here tonight. So make sure that the secretary can get a copy of those, and then they can be in the minutes for next week, so you'll be able to see them. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you get the minutes from your website?
Yeah, there's another copy. There's two copies, one from Warren Stevens, one letter from Warren Stevens.
She has, she has one?
Yes, and the other one is from Bob Stevens, that lives at the top of the hill of White House.
And that one that you just added, is that an additional one?
No, this is just a copy from, this one is from Bob Stevens. He has a copy of this as well.
Someone was trying to speak online, too. I'm sorry. I don't know who.
Yeah, this was actually added into the.
Minutes, uh, to the packet.
The Warren Stevens, that one's in here, yeah.
So to access the letter, you go on your website?
Got a question. Yeah, yeah, if, Mike, if I may, I'll answer. Yeah, if, if, so the letter, one of the letters already is in the packet, which, yes, you go to the town website, go under Select Board Meetings, and you'll see Minutes and Agendas. And, and what you should do right now, if you wanted to do, to do, look at one of the letters, is look at tonight's packet for tonight's date, February 6, and, and scroll down in, in the packet, and you'll find it. The other letters that got submitted tonight will be entered into the minutes for tonight, which should legally be on the website within five days. So you'll, you come back in five days, and you should see the minutes from tonight and be able to read those other letters.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if that's a Class 3 road, if we get another foot of snow, does that have to be maintained now? Since it's Class 3 and not 4?
I'm not bringing a cloud truck down there, I'm sorry.
It's an honest question.
And I think that's an honest answer.
I agree. I'd have watched if you did.
No, we've already, we've already had, we've already had a trial run down there. We're not running any more trucks down there. Right, Darren?
So, in good faith, Brandon and I talked a little bit about this. When, once he was gone, because we already had that one once again, my field of talent, we got at least a grade where the fire truck got buried in the record. It took us three hours to get the fire truck out, pull it all the way back, and we're fine. That's how bad the road is. And to make it fair for the farmers and Hugh and everyone down there, we gotta make it somewhat passable, because it is, right, right? It is impassable right now.
Who made it impassable?
It was that way when we first got there, because of.
Oh, it was? That would have been my first clue not to go down there.
No, not with the information we have.
And just quickly, and I don't, if I may, Darren, I'm, I'm sorry, what, what, what truck got stuck down there?
Engine 4.
So a ladder truck?
No, engine.
Engine 4, sorry, sorry. Gotcha. Engine 4. Good, I was like, holy crud.
Okay, so that wraps up this for tonight. We will have this on the agenda. As, as I stated, it may not be the next agenda, but are, are we gonna send out any special notices to?
Yes.
These landowners to let them know that this is, is, is gonna be on the board?
Yep.
Table? Okay. So we will notice you that, that, especially that it's on the agenda. Okay? And, and that'll be the first step. And then if we come to, if we figure something out, we'll move into a set of hearings and see what we can do, see what we come up with. Thank you all very much for coming in, taking your time.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
How far ahead will you know whether it's on the agenda?
Yeah, well, good to talk with you, Suzanne. Stop by sometime.
Yeah, my three-and-a-half-hour drive.
And if you want copies of the letters and you can't find them, let me know over the email.
As, as I said, we will notice the landowners when this is on the agenda. We're gonna do a little research, so I'm not gonna project right now how long that will be. I, I don't think it'll be very long, though. We'll, we'll get moving on this, okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your time, too. Scottney Fire Budget Projections.
Yeah, so everyone has a, a budget report at their table, and that's the budget report. And that's the budget report, we're going to kind of go over here in just a second. As of January 31st of this year, the Ascotney Fire Department budget has expended $75,577. This budget was approved for $79,776 for fiscal year July 1st, which began in 2022 and goes through June 30th of '23. As of January 31st, this department has $4,199 remaining in their budget until June 30th. Over expended accounts include supplies, which had a budget of $4,550. The actual right now is $22,312. The overage is $17,762. The vehicle maintenance line, which had a budget of $15,975, the actual is $18,499, the overage is $2524, and then a slight overage in PPE. Budget projections have been completed for essential functions and other regular monthly expenses, which include stipends, FICA, workers comp, firewood and mileage reimbursement, electricity, telephone dispatch services and fuel. These projections indicate that Ascotney Fire Department will end the year in a $16,105 deficit, which would include freezing the following expense accounts: supplies, maintenance and repairs, non-vehicle, vehicle maintenance, PPE, hose testing, which has already been completed for this fiscal year, and supplies. Any expenses in frozen accounts would require a select board approval through reserve or upper transfers under the, that initial option. Ascotney Fire Department made the following unbudgeted and unanticipated expenses. Ten radios purchased were purchased due to ten radios no longer functioning, purchased in the supplies line in the Ascotney Fire Department budget. The budget had a five, $4,550 account, the expenditure was $13,360. The forestry truck front end was replaced to pass inspection, this cost $3417. Engine four torque arms on the rear, rear of the truck were replaced, which cost $1766. Three garage doors were replaced at $4,600, and a computer replacement in the ladder truck was $5,842, for a total cost of unanticipated expenses of $28,985. Provided three options, three potential options and what those options would look like. The first option would clear the deficit and fund an additional $12,880 in the Ascotney Fire Department budget for supplies, maintenance and repairs and vehicle maintenance. And the expense made from this additional $12,880 would require a written request to myself and written approval. Option two would be to transfer the deficit and freeze maintenance and repairs, non-vehicle, vehicle maintenance, PPE and hose testing. What this option would basically do is fund the department with its bare necessities, including electric, fuel, telephone, dispatching services and, and stipends and mileage reimbursements. All other accounts would be frozen. If the department needs supplies, maintenance and repairs, non-vehicle, vehicle maintenance, PPE, hose testing, or anything else that falls outside of the bare necessities mentioned in this paragraph, those requests would be delivered to the select board in writing to be added to the agenda for discussion. Option three would be to transfer $20,000 to fund the deficit and then also allow for $3895 in emergency expense, expenses. This option would do everything in option two, but it would also provide the department with limited spending under emergency circumstances. In the case this funding is spent, the town manager and select board will be notified in writing with an explanation of the emergency expenditure. That's all I have at this time.
Anybody else want to comment on this, this time? Darren?
So, when we were paying bills, we had a emergency fund. There was a lot of times that we may have gone over and you guys didn't know, we dipped into our emergency fund to pay for this, to pay for the overs. But maybe the breakdown when we bought things, August, we spent $4,600 on the door openers, not doors. They were, they're 22 years old and two of the three stopped working. So when they came down, they got quotes and they said they couldn't get parts for anything. We figured, well, they're there, they might just well do the third door, which they did. September, we did the hose and lat, ground ladder testing at $2300. October, we bought five portable radios and the reason we bought both five, as I said in our budget meeting last year, that our portables were getting to be 20, 25 years old. So, three years prior to this, I had bought some used radios for $150 for 14 of them. Reason I bought them was because I tried to be frugal, the, that from Vermont where we bought them, they got new, they got grant new radios, their radios matched up with some of our 20, 25 year old radios that we couldn't get parts from. So we just kept replacing parts, batteries and whatnot, and so there we have it there. Well, after we bought the ones in September, in October, in November, the other ones, the oldest ones, died as well, and now we had no more parts. We tried to keep five portables on the engine, both engines and the ladder. Well, we ended up taking radios off in the trucks, we didn't have enough radios, so I had to buy them. You can't send people into burning buildings, you can't send people up on the mountain for searches without radios. So, I had planned to buy five, I didn't plan on maintaining. All our trucks were due for inspection and we started that July 1st. A lot of, a lot of the auto trucks spent at least a week over the reeds being repaired for one thing or another to get an inspection down at Daniel's Construction. It's where and down the trucks, I mean, we're running quite a few calls a year, you know, 300 right now. Last year, we finished the year at 386 and tonight we're at 260 since July 1st. And then the computer went to truck, there was a towing bill on top of that because you can't move the truck and the computer dies. And there will be another bill from Reed for three hours of towing Engine Four out down there at some point. He says he's not going to send one, this is a half, you know, three hours worth of work. And then the forestry, as Brandon stated, that one passed inspection, needed a new front end underneath that. And then on Engine Four, the rear torque arms also went past inspection. We had to keep Engine One going and there was some parts on that on the rear end that they had to put on as well. Then in December, I had to turn around and order a bank charger for my radios. We were hoping that the old bank charger, the new radio would fit into that, and it didn't. I think that was $600, so we had to purchase that. And then Brandon and I talked the other day and we got a quote back to repair one of our thermal imaging cameras, which was $646 in change, I think it was 86 or whatever it was. So we got authorization to repair that. So we had one that we sent out, the other one, and that's 22 years old, they don't make parts from that. So, we're going to get one back and then we'll do something else some other time with another, another camera, because we try to keep one on each of the engines. And one, I've been chief 23, 24 years, never gone over budget, and this was a little embarrassing, but what do we do? You know, we've got to keep the firefighters safe in the town center and we can't run around uninspected fire trucks.
I don't disagree with that, Darren, but we also can't spend money willy-nilly. I, I, I met with Brandon earlier today and several, it appears several conditions in policy and contract have been violated. I, I'm sure you've had those conversations with Brandon already, because if he's, explain that to me, did you talk to him about those?
No, we didn't talk about the contract violations. The contract was violated because the purchasing policy was violated. There are certain thresholds that departments need to meet in order to make purchases. And I think Darren and I did discuss those items and how we need to be notified and purchase orders be sent out. But more specifically, the purchasing policy, which was distributed with the fire department contract, does state that purchases of goods and services with a total price between 2,000 and 5,000 require a sign off on the purchase order by the department head, town manager and finance director prior to order placement. The purchase order shall be supported by three written or verbal price quotations. The department head shall clearly indicate the recommended vendor. If the lowest quotation is not recommended, attaches, attachments to the purchase order shall indicate the reason for that choice. And then between 5,000 and 10,000 require the three written price quotations. And the purchase requisition must be submitted in advance of the purchase. And then purchases of goods and services with a total price of 10,000 shall be made through the competitive bid process. I will say that Darren and I did discuss a path forward, how to resolve issues in the future, but we did address the communication issues.
And Darren, I, and I had talked with you Darren, and, and I was very clear that I'm not looking to place blame, I'm just trying to make, figure out how, what process are we going to use moving forward so that we don't find ourselves in these positions, correct?
Correct. The Motorola radios, there's really only one dealer to save them on. Everyone buys them from this gentleman up in Burlington and then they sub out, he's been doing this stuff for 30 years. I bought two at a time, I bought two and then I bought four. And it was just the way they were coming in. So, yeah, when you combine together, they were over 5,000 absolute, but when he sent me two, because that's all he had on the shelf, it was $1,200 in change, whatever it was.
Okay. But, but we also have to have something in place that's keeping track of the expenses so that we can try to avoid getting to this, and that was another thing you and I talked about. Any comments from Paul?
Yeah, I just have a quick one and it's more, it's again, not blame placing, but trying to understand. So we, we were presented with the fact that the Ascotney Fire Department was pretty much 90%, 88% of their budget halfway through their budget season at the last meeting, so two weeks ago. Looks like some of these expenditures that are on here that are the reason that they're over budget started in August.
July.
Maybe even so. Darren, Darren mentioned the first one I wrote down was August, was for the $4,600, so maybe even before that was some of these expenditures.
The inspections were in July came, that came later?
Even if we said August, September, October, November, which is where a lot of the stuff fell, I'm, I'm, I, I think we need to have a better understanding sooner than later. A lot of these seem to be able to add up. I mean, one seems no big deal, but then when they add up. So what I'm getting at is, I mean, we're, this is February, so we had a lot of months. Maybe we need more, or need to keep a closer eye on this? Like, we found out when it was 88%, so.
So I distribute quarterly reports to the select board.
Yeah.
And in Q1, a report was distributed, and this is the second one, a third one would come in April 4th, would come in July.
Yeah, no, and I don't know where we were with the Q1 either. I, I, all I'm getting at is, is, this is not, this is not a blame thing. What I want to do is, what, with the information we have in front of us, what do we do so that we don't sit here with a 90% budget from any department, regardless of who it is, halfway through a year, a budget year? So, you know, just got to figure some of this out, I guess. And I, I will, I will, to Darren's point about the radios, we still have a purchasing policy regardless of whether, of how it's going to, it's going to go in, but we, we went through this with highway, with the radios, that there wasn't, I mean, we, we went through, we signed right back because we didn't have it. And there was only one place to get radios. And so to that point, we learned that with highway. Still doesn't mean we don't, I guess, try to figure that policy out, or we have been able to be allowed here at the board to vote that policy and say, for this particular purchase, we're going to not follow a policy, not saying we always will, but we have that option to see that and be able to talk about that here. So that is an option when and if we have a purchase that doesn't have, you can't get three quotes. And like I said, we've been through that.
But we do annual budgets and, and our, and we have policy in place that says a certain thing.
Sure.
And may, whether it's anticipated or not anticipated, I, I, I think it raises a problem. If I come in and I say, "I need two radios, so I'm buying two radios," and you just go buy two radios, and then you come back two months later and you bought two more radios, and then you come back two more, two months later and you buy two more radios, there's a precedence that can be set where we're kind of just, we're walking around the rules. And that can't happen. I, I, and I'm not, again.
It's not all the time in the departments. You just don't catch it.
That's right. Dave, absolutely correct.
Not just the fire departments.
I didn't plan it this way, that's what he had on the shelf, he billed me when he had two shipped, and I ordered three, ordered five, and then he sent it. So, he has all our program information and it just.
I guess another quick question, because some of these options, we talked about freezing funds and stuff, and it sounds very dramatic, but is the only money that your department has to use the town's money? Or, I'm, quite honestly, I'm sorry, but I'm hearing stuff about, there's two different kinds of, of, of things. There's the normal housekeeping, housing stuff, and then there's a fire department stuff. Is there, you guys have, you have a chief's fund, you have money, you have stuff there, right? Two, you have money at your department? What, what, how, how do we know, do we know what that budget is that they have, or how much money they have?
When we signed the fire department contract, it was to take over all fire expenses from both departments.
Okay.
So they did give me a set of books, and from those books, we pulled in all of those expenditures.
So any money?
We actually gave the town $11,000 correction.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So what I'm getting at is any money that, that, that the firehouse would have is not spent on anything to do with the fire?
That is not true. We just purchased, if you guys remember back in November, over at Perkinsville, I came to the board and we're talking budget, I had three AEDs die.
Yeah, I do remember that, yeah.
And we did not have the money, they're $1,200 apiece, $1,200 in change, because I just got the bill today. We're taking, we bought one out of three, we just can't get batteries for, and they're only two years old. So, our membership, we're taking money out of our fundraising to buy it. There's some other fittings that I need for the fire truck, I've taken it out of the chief's fund, from our fundraising and from donations, because I was actually going to buy some stuff before all my other stuff died, because the fire service has changed. There is a fitting that we needed to put on two of the trucks, the $1,300 apiece, just for rural firefighting, because a lot of members, a lot of fire departments are short manned out. This one here, we don't need porta pints anymore, it's called rural hitch. And one of them just came in, I just paid it today out of the fire, out of the fire chief's fund.
Okay. So I guess what I'm getting at is, it's not, I'm not, I'm not upset, what I'm trying, what, what I'm trying to say is, it almost sounds like not all of the fire stuff is being paid by the town, which is.
No, it's not.
So, but we thought that that was, so now this could even be even more. And I'm, I'm trying, so what I'm confused is, we get a budget and I'm trying to figure out what that budget is, but then I just hear, again, that we were spending money somewhere else for other things. So I don't know if all the finances are.
And I'm thoroughly confused. And I'm thoroughly confused on who's spending what money, and whose money is it?
All I'm trying to do is figure out how we can work on this and figure this out, and it's...
The board asks that we level funds.
The board, this board?
Correct. So when we take it and do a budget, okay, we do our best to level funds, okay? But here's the problem, prices go up, we don't, okay? So we actually are cutting our budget every time. We can't anticipate trucks breaking down, we can't anticipate our AEDs breaking down, we can't anticipate things happening, okay? If you look at our budget, and you look at the supply line, look at all of the stuff that is listed in that supply line, where it has to go. When we paid our own bills, everything was line items, okay? It isn't that way anymore. It's stuff is clumped together, and it makes it hard to budget certain stuff. So, you know, it's, you can't anticipate fuel costs going up, you can't, there's a lot of variables that you have to look at. And so instead of coming to the town all the time and saying, this is what we need, this is what we need, we buy a lot of stuff still ourselves.
And where does that money come from?
It comes from fundraising, or donations from people...
Okay.
And if you talk to any salesman, fire, all the salesmen that we've got quotes for, fire gear is going up 25% every year, and how do you keep up with that? How do you, how does anyone keep up with that? It's crazy.
Well, actually, I, Barb, you're not going to like me for this, but I'm going to disagree with you...
Probably not, I'm glad.
I'm going to disagree with you on anticipation, because that's kind of the purpose of the budget, is to, to some degree, to some degree, you can't pinpoint it, I get it, but that is the point of the budget, is to try to factor in what some of those costs are going to be to replace things, and we put money in reserve accounts and stuff for certain stuff, you know, so that we can get there.
But here's the other thing, we did have a budget, and then we were told to cut it.
Yeah, and that, yeah, well, that's next year, that's next year's, that's not the one you're in now.
I'm really, I'm really...
I will say that we do have a budget of $15,975 for vehicle maintenance, and that budget line item isn't overly expended right now. It's, I mean, it's expended, but it's over by 2,500. The real issue was, is the supplies line, and that line item's over by 18,000.
Now I'm going to agree with Barb on something, and this I think goes back to the conversation I had with you Darren, and that is the, yeah, write that down, right? Well, you said it's complicated for you to keep up with it, and that's kind of what I talked to Darren about, is that we have to come up with a way that works, so that you can, you know, you guys know where you're at with your budget, and you're working with the town at the same time, and everybody's on the same page, whether that's monthly or, you know, quarterly, or whatever that takes, whatever you can do. But it sounds like you might need some help from the town to get that broken down a little easier for you to follow on your end. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Paul?
I'm trying to be, I want to...
Well, again, I'm trying to solve a problem moving forward.
That's exactly, no, that's exactly what I'm doing, I don't want to ask the questions, it's, I want to fix this and to try to work on this, and just not sure if everybody's...
We're still going to figure out what we're going to do for the next four and a half months.
Right, and it's not about, it's not about who did what, or whatever, but what I'm hearing is a couple of things. I'm hearing that Barb, you're the treasurer, correct? So you handle all the monies and all that stuff? So it sounds like Barb is needing some help.
That's what I heard.
That's what I heard. Is that correct? Not, well, with the budget and the, sorry.
Remember, you've got an association, and then you have the officers. The officers put the fire equipment and the apparatus stuff together. Barb and Colby worked on the power, the internet and telephone, that, because we're an association, so one person doesn't control everything.
Right, but you're still the treasurer, according to the association and the way that's set up, okay? Because there's a board of directors.
Yeah.
All right. We've also, we've done away with the fire commission, which Dave and some others even said, I think Darren even said the last time meeting, that that probably wasn't a good idea, correct? And Dave's brought that up. An actual fire commission, I think, needs a town vote, but you guys talk about these, this budget, where you're at, you must do something like Brandon's doing, where your stuff is at your board meetings?
We met for Thursday.
Right, but you talk about this, right? And this stuff?
In our fire, in our meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yes. I'm going to recommend, and some people might not like this, but I'm going to recommend the fact that we, maybe there's a board member from the select board that sits on there as an ex officio, like we have on other boards, that can kind of work with this and understand this, especially for, you know, it's the budget and it's money. And then the second thing I'm worried about is the fact that they're still spending money that's for fire apparatus or for things that's not town money. I mean, anything that they have from fundraising or that should be for whatever they need, like if they wanted to buy something extra, I guess, but not the function.
You know, we're all taxpayers, you know?
Yeah, all of us.
And we're trying, yes, we continue doing fundraising, because we know we can't put the burden on the town to buy a lot of the stuff, and it is safety stuff, so we continue to do the...
This is, I'm sorry Darren, this is going to, this is going to sound like I'm against you fundraising, that's not what it is, because it, you have some good stuff down at the yard, so anyways.
You want some?
Not right now. But what I'm getting at is, Ray's not in here saying, well, I know I'm not going to be able to pay for everything this year, so I'm going to have to have some money elsewhere. He puts a budget together, and he says, here's what we're going to need, and yes, gas might be up, the salt might be up, that stuff happens, but what I'm getting at...
You're comparing apples to oranges.
And what is that? So I'm looking at, there's money, there's equipment, there's things that get bought. What's, what is the apples and the oranges?
Well, you know, I mean...
And I'm just, I'm legitimately asking, I'm not trying to be smart, I'm asking what the difference is.
Because the town budget is, they take, and the town highway does set a budget, okay, and they have an overage every year, so they have, I shouldn't say an overage, they have a surplus.
It could, yeah, absolutely.
So that surplus now goes in...
A reserve fund, yeah.
In their fund. Nobody else can touch that town budget, so after a while, they have the money in their surplus to do whatever. We don't have that.
Well, not really, because that surplus, they have to come to us to spend that money, which starts to come back to where we're at now. If you had a surplus, you'd have to do the same thing, you wouldn't just go out and spend it, you'd follow the policy. You got something you want to add?
Better go, Dave.
Better, right, Dave. I mean, no, don't...
I heard something that I didn't want to hear at the very outset.
What's that?
I heard that there was a number of what was charged to be purchases made violating the contract. I think that's very unfair to make on February 5th, or whatever the date is today, when three or four of those have dated back since August, September. I think if there was an issue with the contract, the purchase came before us to sign a warrant. Shame on all of us for not picking up on that, though.
Absolutely.
So, that's point one. I think that's, I think that's, I had to put covers on my ears, because smoke was coming out when I started to hear that. I think that's unfair at this date to do that to somebody six months after a purchase. There's a big difference, though, between the purchases that are made here, because some of them, I'm not sure could be put into the annual operating budget. In fact, I know that, because the use of them are going to be generated multi-years. I hope 10 radios aren't bought, but I did pick up on something else, where another town happened to file a grant to buy radios, which is another source of income, not an annual operating budget. That's kind of important to note. This is a failure to say what a department might want, and then they do it, and then it's catch-up to pay, and we paid it six months ago, or whatever, and I think, quite honestly, that it may have been the lack of a full-time person in charge of finance, which we now have. That's what I think. I don't think this is the only thing that we're going to find.
And I don't disagree with that, but I think both sides have to have their fingers on those numbers, and I think both sides have a responsibility to do that.
But some of these purchases are made as not even close to being annual operating.
I mean, if I can, I think the two on here, like, to Dave's point, like, the garage doors and the radios, the radios you could say, and I remember Darren has said that, we bought radios for them, a different set, a different kind of radios before, yeah, mobiles. And there was talk about eventually these, but we got those done at that time. But from a normal budget, I mean, you take your trucks in for inspection, fine, you know, that stuff happens, the computer goes, that happens, and it's not necessarily budgeted, so hopefully you can try to figure that out. I think, you know, like Dave was saying, the doors and the radios are going to be a longer term, like, it's not just a one-month thing, it's going to be used. You know, and the reason I asked about ARPA earlier was because, I mean, we bought radios last time on ARPA, and I don't always want to go back and say this and that, but I mean, I mean, that's part of what I think, you know, some of that was.
Play to me the ARPA radios you're talking about for us, because it came out of my budget last year.
Thought those radios...
One, I had money set aside in my...
What did we buy with ARPA money?
It wasn't, didn't, didn't we buy those mobiles?
I had it in my budget, in my budget last year, and it came out of that.
That wasn't ARPA money?
I'm going to have to go back and look.
And if it wasn't, I apologize, that's what I thought it was, and it could be just not having those numbers in front, I know we spent some...
Those were the radios that were the different band for dealing with the, right?
Right. One of them came out of my budget.
Okay.
Well, anyways, there's, that money is, like Dave has said, is for some of that too, so for all departments, for whatever, it's for the usage of that, but, yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure what the...
Well, I want to say, I don't disagree with necessarily what Dave is saying, where most of these things are not, they're not really budgetary items. Isn't that what you're saying, Dave?
Yeah, and I'm not in favor of going in, I don't know how to resolve this yet, because this is, you know, for me, it's the first time to see this actual spell out, so I'd be in favor of freezing the expenses at the moment, to work with the town manager on, for Darren too, and then I don't know that the, I don't know that the board needs to be involved this deep in this, but I'm not in favor of tapping the rainy day account. I don't exactly know how to fix this, but I, we're aware of it now, and freezing any other capital, I mean, you got to somehow put your foot down, and then, but still get through the end of the year.
Yeah, but I also want to have some sort of handle on where we're at with spending, you know, and I get it, that these things can happen, and we'll work on that moving forward, we're not going to solve that tonight, I get it. I think Darren was first, Barb.
I'm not here looking for money tonight, I'm not, and I'm not looking for money tomorrow. Like, it's going to be close getting by, I'm not asking for any money, I think it's great what Grant did, it's awesome. I don't want my hands tied, because I called three people on Thursday, looking to see it, because I knew we were where we were close, and no one answered, and I took it by myself, and I went and bought some 911 additive, because it was going to be so damn cold, and I went and bought some DEF, because I didn't have any antistation. Don't, don't tie my hands where I have to call someone to go buy DEF, or windshield pressure fluid, or oil for the truck, or any of these, please, because I don't want you guys answering the phone. You always answer, you call back.
So do I!
You do not like...
I do too, I try to, I call you back.
Did you call me back Thursday? No.
I didn't get a call from you Thursday.
Exactly.
No, I, no, no, yeah, yeah, I didn't, no, I didn't.
I know.
You can check it if you want, I swear to God, because if I did, I'd have called you back, though.
I do share Paul's comment earlier, where, about fundraising. The town wants, from both departments, or from any department, open, honest discussion about what that might be for the budgets. Now, we may not always agree, that's fine, but some of us have spent years listening to what the fire departments had to say, and they said that they needed some funding, of which I thought we took care of by putting record amounts in the non-motorized fund, really. A lot of money, compared to other years. And it was to relieve them of fundraising, to be able to spend less time devoted to, I want...
To fundraising, so they could focus on firefighting and training and...
Or maybe even staying home.
And some other things.
Or maybe even staying home.
Oh, good.
Because I heard it all, and that's why that lit the fire onto more funding. We have raised the funding, so I, will it ever be enough? Probably not, but I think, I don't know, I do agree with you, Paul, when you said that about, I thought we went through enough of the meetings where we're talking about fundraising and saying, wait a minute.
Well, Barb's first this time.
Yes. So I just also wanted to bring up the fact too, and Brandon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we had an issue with our fuel cars, they didn't work. They charged us $300 and some odd dollars to replace those cars, so I believe that money's also in our budget that we didn't plan on as well.
They did go through a transition, and there was an issue, I'm not sure if the 360 was charged, or what the story is with that, but I will look into it.
Yeah, we got a $300 charge.
And I also would like, and I know, and I've looked this up, and I think it was April 1st of 2019, in the minutes, that some things can be paid prior to the board.
Only if they're going to be late, and they'll possibly...
Well, that's where I'm coming up with it, because I'm understanding, and I'm having a hard time with our bills not being paid on time.
Whoa.
We had a disconnect notice.
Whoa.
No, hang on, let me finish.
No, I'm hanging on.
We've had a disconnect notice from the light company, Brandon had to pay it with his credit card.
That was like January of last year.
We've had an expenditure bill, two of them, that we paid for one, that was $200 and some odd dollars. Comcast, which is tied into our security at the firehouse, which wasn't paid, so the alarms are going off, so that had to get paid. So my question to the board is, why can't our household bills get paid prior to coming to the board for payment? Because if you look at your billing cycles, our billing cycles don't all match up together. I'm sure Dave gets his light bill different than you get your light bill. So, I mean, they all don't come in together. So I'm just asking if that can happen.
Paul had his hand up first, I think, and then Darren and Dave.
So factual question. Thank you for bringing up the fact that some bills have not been paid. What was... When was the last time a bill has not been paid for you guys?
We just got one the other day. It was two hundred and something dollars overdue.
Okay, for what?
That was the Comcast bill.
Okay, so there is a bill to go look at that was not paid. For Comcast, Comcast.
There's another one that I got from BLS. That a couple of computers or one computer battery died. They didn't have a charge account. I was asked to go get the battery over from my life safety, which I did. Dropped the bill off, turned it in, and I got a, an email from BLS saying this is eleven months overdue.
Eleven months. Okay, so that's two bills. One just recently that you got from what, what was it? I'm sorry.
Comcast.
Comcast.
Then we had one in the spring, I had to pay a three, I had to use the town by town credit card to pay another internet bill in May. So we could have internet to get our fire reports off.
So, so the recent one Comcast, is that bill go to you guys or does that come here to the town?
It goes to us, and as soon as we get it, we take it to the.
One goes to the town, one comes to us, because they're, correct me if I'm wrong, Barb, there's a password that they will not give us the way it was set up. Two presidents suck up.
So, so.
They can, they will not ship it to here. Everything else comes to here.
I'm not being difficult, but I'm trying to understand, there's two Comcast bills then? You guys get one, we get one?
It's a consolatus consolatus.
Oh, yeah.
Consolidated in the next one.
All right, what, so does, does all the bills come to us? No, correct, correct.
All of this one.
Just one. And that's the one that's late? And you have to turn that in and then we have to do something, okay. I think we need to figure that out. I think.
Yeah, because Suzanne takes and downloads, she takes and gets the light bill, and then we also get a mailing of the light.
Well, when you say Suzanne, does Suzanne, so I want to, I want to clarify this too. When the bills here for the fire department, is that? Does the treasurer do that, or Suzanne?
So when we were without an accountant, which was for quite some time, Suzanne handled the warrant. And at that time, all bills went to Suzanne.
Okay.
Recently, as the accountant, the new accountant's being phased in, those responsibilities are now transferred over to our accountant.
That's like Dave was saying, yeah, that's going to be better.
That full transition took place with this warrant. As you know, she just started less than two months ago. Would you like me to respond, or?
Well, if you want to.
So, so Barb, I asked you last week if all the bills came to the town and that we needed to have all the bills mailed to the town, and what was your response to me?
The response is, we don't have all those mailed to the town. We have them still at the department. So for some reason, if we don't do contracts anymore, then we don't go through the whole process of changing the addresses, but you get them emailed.
Okay, but you just said that the only bill that doesn't come to the town is, is the Comcast bill. So which one is correct? What you told me yesterday, or what you're saying tonight?
I'm confused. We get them mailed.
But you just said that only one bill doesn't come to the town.
The town gets them emailed.
And for years I've been asking Ascotney Fire to mail the bills directly to the office. Isn't that correct?
For years?
Yes.
Yeah, you asked once.
That's not true. I have an email chain.
Mr. Chairman, is this a never getting done?
No, I'm just saying that this has been happening for so long that I've been asking these bills to come to the town. And then on several occasions, we get these bills in, they've missed the warrant, and then I hear the department going around town saying bills aren't paid. And I'm sorry, but this administration pays its bills so much, to the point where you had an eighty thousand dollar budget and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of bills have been paid. More than, on a percentage basis, more than any other department in town.
Also, our credit card has been shut off because of non-payment. So that bill comes right to the town.
So I just want, point of order on, on, on one quick thing, I, if I can, point of order on, I I, I, I was there, I know that. When was that? A year ago, or just recently?
What?
The credit card bill.
That was a year.
That was a year ago. And quite honestly, it, it was a year ago. I'm worried about where we are right now and then what we got. Yes, there has been problems. Nobody can, nobody's going to probably sit here and say that we have some bills that haven't been paid. In the past, not recently. It may be this Comcast, that's what I was asking about the date on that. So.
And Deborah's been given the passwords, so she can go online as well to get the Comcast bill.
That's good. They should, everything should be here and, and be taken care of here. Also, the, the, the power bill that was not paid that you guys had mentioned, Darren had shown that to me. That was a year ago.
Yeah, we could have fought.
No, no, I, I understand that. I, I just, I want.
I'm just worried about like late fees.
I thought that.
Who's paying the late fees?
Right, well, that's, it's our responsibility for not paying it, if that's the case. And that was a while ago. I don't ever want your cars to get shut off. I don't ever want you guys to have to use your personal cars to buy gas. That's, that's ridiculous. But I was under, I just, I want to go forward with what, we had a process in place. It doesn't feel like that process is working. It doesn't feel like the communication is working. And that's how we got to somewhere where we're at, maybe. So what are we going to do to, we want, we want to make that better. We want to fix that. We don't want you guys to have to do this. Even that power bill that was paid, I think Brandon wrote on it. He paid it. And I think it was personal?
As soon as I got it, I paid it with the credit card.
No, no, this is what I'm saying is.
We, we can't pay a bill if we don't have the bill.
Right.
And I wasn't sure back then if the issue was with our finance department or if the issue was with us not receiving the bill on time.
Right.
So I put a process in place so that every time an invoice is dropped off to us, that invoice would be logged with the date that we received it and the due date on the bill.
Yep.
And then the person that dropped the bill off would sign it, and then the finance department would sign that they received it and the information is correct.
Right.
That process that I put in place has not been followed. I don't know where it went.
All right, so, so the bottom line is, I feel we have some opportunities to, to improve. And, and regardless, we have some opportunities to improve. So we need to figure out what those are and how we're going to do it.
No, I just have a random question. So outside of this, across the board, our bills are paid for our departments?
This is the only department that you have issues with paying bills?
Just curiosity sake, if this is something, just, we need to have better communication. So I wanted to know that. This is, if this is something that you're finding issues with throughout all departments, I just wanted to know.
But it also seems that for the most part, the bills are getting paid.
Right, so what I'm saying, the bills.
And I'm saying that because I've heard of three bills tonight, two of them are over a year old. That's history, let it go. Let's deal with, like Paul said, let's deal with what's going on now.
So what I'm asking the board is that when household bills come in,
Yeah.
why can't they get paid the minute they come in? Why do they have to wait?
We approve them.
Paid by who? Other than, other than payroll?
Payroll is the one thing, anything else is considered a vendor, and it waits for two weeks at a minimum, and sometimes three, depending on when we have meetings. Because the boards have to sign off on each one of them. Payroll, we don't. Payroll is, if we have a question on them, it, it, you, it's retroactive.
Correct.
But if they're going to be late?
It is what it is. I, I, we did the fire departments for a reason. I think we wanted it all in-house financing. We wanted to be in charge of whatever had to do with monies. Now shame on us for not having it in place, but then we pay the late fees.
Yeah, that's us, yeah.
When it gets the shut off, then that's, that's, that's.
Do, do we not have the same bills coming from the other fire department? We have to. Is it mailed here? Is it mailed to this address?
No, it's not mailed. So that's why we put the process in place.
No, the other fire department.
The other fire department.
Oh, yeah, all, all the fire department bills come to us.
Not even fire departments, we're on the highway.
All highway department bills.
Police officers.
Excellent.
That's what, all bills in town come to us.
Then that's what I'd like to see.
We have no issues with paying bills in all the departments.
Okay, that's what, that was my only question.
How can we get there?
All the companies would have to be notified.
Correct.
Yeah, good.
And Susan has done that.
Yeah.
Susan has gone and done all that.
Susan, Suzanne, Suzanne.
Suzanne.
Yeah, so that's okay. So it's saying like AFVD, right, or whatever, Ascotney Volty Fire Department, and then the address is here.
Right.
The town address is here, yes.
Is here, email's here, but then the power company, the internet company send us a copy.
Timeout, timeout. We're getting paper bills delivered here through the mail for other departments.
All departments.
All departments.
With the exception of some lingering bills. And, and we knew that.
It comes in in an envelope. It's a bill that comes in in an envelope, addressed to the town of Weathersfield, and it's delivered here.
There are some accounts that we have that we manage online.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, not every single bill, sometimes we get, for example, the Zoom, our Zoom invoice comes via email, or it's on our account and we just download it. They don't send us a bill in the mail. And I, I will say that I told Ascotney Fire that taking over all of their expenses was going to be a transition. It's not something that just happens overnight. We pulled in all of their expenses. There have been issues, they've been addressed, they've been resolved. That's why I'm surprised to hear about the electric bill from January of last year tonight.
Well, I still, I still want to, I still want to put a greater focus on what are we going to do to fix this? I think that's more important.
I think we've spent a lot of time on that. I, 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 I think that we need to, I think we need to, like any other department, if it, if it came up close to hitting its head, then we're just going to say, and I'm not picking on any one of them. I'm just saying that any other, and I'm not going to say don't buy DEF.
Right, right.
But I am saying that it's got to be worked through the town manager, because we don't have any authority, we should not.
And, and, and I was just going to say to you two, please, just get together with Brandon. Do whatever you got to do to get those things mailed over here. Whatever it takes. It, no, I didn't say email. I said get.
You're missing what she's saying. All the bills are emailed here.
From who?
From all the vendors.
From all the vendors, we get copies.
Comcast, Xfinity, all of the bills are emailed here.
Okay, so maybe, so maybe that's why we only have like one outstanding bill that said, I think you said Comcast won't do it?
No, Comcast, she needed a code.
Okay.
So the code was given.
Okay.
I stand corrected.
To take and give.
So now all the bills are being emailed over here?
Okay. Can I just?
Go ahead, Wendy.
So are any bills actually mailed to you anymore?
We, we get the copies of the bills.
From, from our distributors.
Okay, so my, my only concern is this, is that if, if you're getting them mailed, is, and I don't know anything what's going on here, so I just want to understand this. If you're receiving the bills, is it based on the day you receive it, you are mailing it here?
No, they are emailed here.
From the.
From the vendor.
Power, they email here. Comcast, I'll email here. They send us a copy.
Yep.
And we make sure.
So the accountant is not here. So, so that, I would have just asked her. It, is, because what I'm wondering is why are they not getting on the warrant? Because all the other departments are, so I was just trying to figure out where's the lack?
It's, it's to do with the billing cycles.
Yeah, but we still shouldn't be more, so far behind that you're ending up with late fees. Okay.
What late fees have we received this fiscal year?
I'd have to go back and look. I'm not sure we, we have, but it's my concern that we do.
I don't remember seeing any. And I've, the only.
And if we did, we'd be the ones paying them anyway.
And the only shut-off notice that I've been made aware of is that bill from January of 2022 that continues to be brought up that was paid as soon as I became aware of it.
Correct.
So I don't think we should be focusing on shut-offs.
On what?
On things getting shut off, or, or accounts, or if that's the only one that, back in January.
When we paid, this fiscal year, when we paid the Xfinity bill, that's because it was shut off. And that bill was two hundred and fifty-three dollars.
And then after that, the accountant received the password and username to get into the Xfinity account.
No, Xfinity is already done. It's consolidated.
Consolidated.
Okay, we're going to wrap up, Darren, so go quickly.
This may be for Brandon, maybe for you guys. So on the garage doors and the radios, should that have been an insurance expense? We have a thousand-dollar deductible. I know it's water over the dam, but I'm just trying to come up with. I would think insurance should cover some of that.
I think it's perhaps a possibility. And, and, and I, I guess, Darren, what I would say is, is just having the conversation with us ahead of time would have helped to some degree. Go ahead, go ahead.
Brandon and I did talk about the garage doors, uh, the door.
Yeah.
But I think maybe we all should think outside the box a little, or maybe we do it, that insurance, because right now our, our cameras all got fried. The security cameras. It's a thousand-dollar deductible. Cameras are nine hundred bucks. We're, we're going to, you know, dish the money up for that. But I'm wondering, do you, should we have a list from the LCT, what their insurance company will cover and pay for? So if some, let's say our boiler does, or someone else's boiler does, that's not in the budget.
It is on, it is under insurance.
Okay. What is the, the door openers?
The twenty-year-old radio, a door opener.
The door opener is.
No.
It's questionable.
Yeah, you know, I'm just curious about the radios. I mean, we pay insurance, but does it cover the radios? Does it cover?
Not at the twenty-year-old. Well, we'll, we'll get into a conversation and a discussion about.
If you ran all the ten radios with your truck, maybe that would crush them. They were brand new, but not twenty-year-olds.
It was you?
See, very clear.
Yeah.
Can I just, can I just close up, if you want, at least for me, with a couple of things? I just heard Darren say it again. He's going to get some money to pay something with. How much money do you guys have that's not the town money then, that's there? You must have a rough idea. You guys were five thousand, thirty thousand?
I just got a five thousand dollar donation in my chief's account that was specified for the chief's account. So that puts me, or puts the department, me, whatever, at ten thousand dollars. But that's not going to last long, because I've got a bunch of stuff I have to buy.
Well, again, I'm, I'm still confused on where the money is and how.
Can you explain the chief's account?
The chief's account was started by Tom Heitz. When we operated on ten thousand dollars, he cut us a check for ten thousand dollars. And he said, there, you don't have to go to the town for money, you don't have to go to membership. If you see something that's an emergency, you can go buy. So that's, he did that for many years, many years. And his son just started that out again. Because they had both passed and he left some money to us, so. There were no, so you see what the money's there for, for emergency funds, that we don't have to come here all the time. Or I don't have to go to the board to take money out of the fire department savings account.
Do, do we get, do, do we get the books and get to see all the monies that go through Ascotney Fire Department then?
Yeah.
So we see all this, we can see all this, right?
I can't see it. I, we, we took over the books back when the fire department contracts were signed. So anything that's happened from that date forward, we're not aware of.
No, no.
But yes, we did, we did take in five years of the books.
Can I ask a silly question? Is there inventory of all of the events?
Good question.
We turned that over to the town. Where'd that, oh, over there. Yeah, we turned, we turned that stuff all over to the town. It's probably been two, three years since we did that.
Okay.
Because then you can depreciate an accessory, replace a company?
We are right in the middle of building a capital plan. We started pulling all of that information in and we're, we're trying to get through it.
But I heard the chief say that he has ten thousand dollars for an emergency fund. When I look at the expenses on the budget, I think you've already spent your ten thousand dollars. It, it's, it's already gone. You, you, take your ten thousand dollars and put it into what you've already spent it on.
But there's other needs that we need.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm, I'm sure there is, but there's also, you're also looking at a potential, what, sixteen thousand dollar deficit?
Correct.
Well, that's an emergency too.
Okay, but you've got to draw the line. You guys said you wanted to pick up our bill. You guys said you wanted to pick up our bills. I mean, you want us to empty our account for an emergency?
I, I, I think there's, there's something to what Dave had to say, which is that these, these weren't budgetary items, so I can exceed, but that's what creates the emergency. It's already happened. It's, the, the emergencies already happened, so it, it's, I don't know.
How, how do we keep them functioning though until we make a decision what we're doing?
We're not out of money, right? Isn't it twenty...
Well, we're going to, first of all, before that rolls into something, we're going to make sure the fire department keeps functioning.
No, that's what I'm getting at, that your credit cards are working, you can get gas, you can get the stuff you need. That's all, I want to make sure that they can keep doing what they're doing.
So like I was saying earlier, paying, just the basic necessities of the department will create a $16,000 deficit. Right now, there's $4199 remaining in their budget until June 30th. And when you look at the budget here...
$4100?
Yep. Everything in blue are projections to year end. And in the blue, only necessities we're budgeting. Um, you'll see in electricity, $951 because that's anticipation of paying the Norwich invoices that are currently, have accumulated to $17,000, and that has to be distributed out to each one of the department's electric line items. And then from there, average is 214. Telephone and internet average is 100. And then we have dispatching services, radio repeater fees, fuel at $424 a month, and insurance. And the department's annual statements.
I'm going to give a, I'm not taking it this year because it's more important staying...
We should give them all the solar credits.
Would you like some solar credits?
I don't know if that'll help.
You can't allocate, uh, your credits, some of your credits to another...
To, to...
You know that. Believe it or not, you can't. You donate it.
But they're, they're already there, they're already there.
They're already in the system.
They're already in the system. They're one of the eleven.
They are.
They are one of the...
That sells everybody else, so.
But thank you.
I can hear somebody else's budget, kind of like the library or something, saying, what about me?
So what you're saying is...
I know, I have an address too.
Hey, can I, can I also...
Okay, I'm going to write that down.
Can I also make one other quick thing? I do...
Punch base with them.
I do know this, and I wanted to ask Darren this question. We had some problems with the credit card a while ago, and the credit card limits were a little bit lower. Are you, are the limits where you need them to be with the gas prices the way they are to get your trucks filled up when you take your car to the, to the gas pump? I mean...
I don't know, because I lost some stuff with the fire department credit card because we were using the town credit card. The town, the town credit card is in my name. I knew it was getting real close to being maxed out, so we're paying fuel for that till we get the WICs card figured out.
Okay.
So that's what some of the reimbursement, what the town reimbursed us for our credit card, we use by and so on. So to answer your question, I, I don't know what the limit is on that. I, we don't see the paperwork.
No, I want to make...
Are you talking about the town credit card?
Yeah.
You have $2,000 a month.
Yeah. Shit, I, I have no idea what we have.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, me.
I've been sitting here and I've been listening to all this.
Well, it's about time.
Well, number one, obviously, there's a problem. We, we, we can't solve it tonight. We, we do have to figure out, the fire department needs to run. There's nothing we can do about that. We have to find a fund somewhere. Okay, in the beginning, I go through these warrants with a fine-tooth comb.
Yes, you do.
And I'm sorry, there is nowhere in here that I know whether the fire department has spent something that they shouldn't be spending money on. Someone else needs to be catching that before it comes to us. I'm sorry, you can't just blame it on Joe Schmo not doing something. We need to know that that's something that needs to be...
So, so categorizing, categorizing the line items as they're coming through in, in better fashion, is that what you're...
I don't, when I see a bill on here, we'll say like, for example, service level agree, I'm just going to use an example. 1330.40 is the first line item on a warrant. Well, how do I know what that is? You guys might know what it is. How do I know if it's something that doesn't need to be pre-approved by, by a certain fund or something? I mean...
Is there a way to do that? Or would that really complicate the warrant?
Well, I think if you see an expense on the warrant for $4,500, let's say, and it's for the purchase of a radio, let's say.
Yeah, but then you, someone in the office should be catching that and saying, hey, this shouldn't be going through until it gets approved. We shouldn't be sitting here looking through the warrant saying, gee, what's this for? What's this, what's, I mean, that's not our job. Our job is to make sure that these bills get paid in a timely manner so that we can run a business.
Well, the, the problem, Kelly, is the way that they were structured is exactly like Darren had said. They were purchased one at a time in very lower amounts. So when they went through the warrant...
Yeah, I don't, but I, I don't think she's attacking...
Combine them together.
No.
I don't think she's attacking that, that specific situation, Brandon. I think she's...
She's just using that as an example.
Yeah, but she's, and she's just using that as an example, and she's trying to, I think, ask you, is there a way that within the office, we can structure the warrant so that we can identify that something was a, was a, um, purchasing policy issue and it, and it's been addressed or it hasn't? Is there a way to do that?
Or over budget, an expense that was not anticipated.
Well, we do our, our monthly finance reports, and then at that time, we would catch it. But on the warrant, when the accountant receives the invoices, the accountant should look at the invoice and see that it exceeds a purchasing policy threshold. And at that time, notify me to talk to Darren. That process didn't take place. We didn't have an accountant, and a couple of things slipped through the cracks, and this was one of them.
Yeah.
Well, and the email thing is not following that other policy that you talked about with, where they, they come in and here it's delivered, and there's a receipt, and somebody signs on it and it's dated, that it's been received. Although there is a timestamp in the computer, so it is there.
Well...
We can...
If I was in his position, we're going to pay it no matter what. I'm going to keep submitting them to you. I mean, stop and think about it. We're paying for them.
Well, that was the purpose...
We're not making him do his job that, that he signed a contract for us with.
That was the purpose of the Q2 finance report and then bring it into the select board meeting for discussion, is to address the issue right now. And then Darren and I did discuss and have a good conversation about stronger communication moving forward. I don't anticipate any future issues. What I was looking for is a solution with the budget and the deficit moving forward.
But did we pay? Have we already approved the $4,600 for the door, for the doors repair?
Yes.
Yeah, that, yeah, that stuff's gone. That's gone.
So that was in here as one lump sum is $4,600?
I believe so.
Yeah.
So none of us picked that up?
No.
We had the one that goes through it with a fine-tooth comb.
Because I just assumed that it was stuff that you guys...
I'm sorry, Kelly. Wendy?
No, I, I was just going to say, I think some of it is, is just the fact that, um, maybe there wasn't a lot of understanding, a lot of small stuff, a lot of problems. I'm not, I'm not placing any blame here on anything, but, um, I think that it, somehow along the way, there's probably been maybe some lack of communication.
Yeah.
And a lot got spent within, um, in one quarter. And I'm, I'm not saying anything that was purchased wasn't a, a necessity, but I think somewhere along the line...
Oh, yeah, it's not, yeah.
I think that lies being brought to us now, I, you know, I, I do see why we're in this situation.
But I, I would, if I could, I, I'm still hooked up on this, there's other money that's out there getting spent on fire services or things.
Or not being spent.
Or, or that, that you have, and I want to be able to make sure that when we're sitting down doing a budget, I want to see what that is. You must have something with that, right? You must, that's all kept track of, and you've got spending and everything there. So we should be able to see that as well, because that's going to also help us. Maybe when you present a budget, Darren, and you say, just for arbitrary, say it's $100,000 or whatever, and we say, okay, well, some of us, myself and, I, I've sat here and said, I don't know if this is enough. I've heard Dave say, I don't know if this is enough on some things. Mike's even said, are you sure that's going to be? Well, when I see this other number over here, and I say, well, just look, you guys have already spent $10,000 last year on this, of other things, we want to pay for the stuff. I, and I want to make sure that that gets there, at least I do.
Or even have a better idea what, what those funds, when we're talking, these things are emergencies, what are supposed to be taken care of by that $10,000? Is that to go towards, in this fundraising or whatever, is that to go towards radios or doors? Or is, I mean, I want to just know personally, or is that something that when the budget comes before us, um, should they be requesting more money for all these things that just happened, you know?
I feel like we should give them money back for that stuff.
When we make a request, when we put in the budget for this coming year, we were asked to cut the budget, so...
No, 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 I meant for last year, though. I'm talking about...
Right, but I'm just saying, but the thing that is, is you, you want us to take and put in what, what we, we think we're going to need, but then you tell us to cut the budget. So we cut the budget.
First of all, first of all, they didn't tell you to cut the budget. I did.
I was going to say, I...
And that was, that was a request made by me early on in a conversation that I had with Brandon, and I've already apologized for multiple times, and I will again, because I shouldn't have done it. It, we, it was the presentation, and Paul caught it. He said, those, those budgets should have came through the way they were presented, and he's right. And I never should have done that, and I'm sorry that I did.
The budget didn't get cut. The proposal got cut.
Right, right.
Watch your words. Every single line item in this budget is way up, okay? It's up the inflation rate.
Well, well, and that was what I was going to finish with, though, is, is that's next year's budget, not this one.
Right, I, that's what I'm saying.
But, but I wished I had left that alone. I, I wished I hadn't have done that. That was a mistake. But I didn't do it just to you. Anyway, we're going to wrap this up for tonight. Brandon, do you need a decision tonight on...
No.
...what to do with this?
I think it needs to be on the next agenda, and we need to figure it out because we have, this is, this year is different than previous years. In previous years, we had fund balance to work with. So we knew that if we went over budget for the general fund, we'd be okay because we had some funding and cumulative fund balance to deal with it. This year, we do not have any cumulative fund balance. So what we are doing is every single month, we're meeting with departments, and even today, I issued cuts in hours for hourly employees because we're, I calculated the number of hours remaining and by the hourly rate, and came up with an average number of hours. So multiple employees' hours were cut today in order to meet the budget at June 30th. So there's not, there's not $16,000 in fund balance like previous years, which is why we're coming and saying, hey, this is what we're dealing with, with this department. We need a solution.
Yep. Nope, we're going to move on.
No, it's very important.
Okay.
Brandon asked to have a meeting on the next agenda. When you move a, a meeting to a Tuesday night, that's our drill night. Next week, next Tuesday is our, our two Tuesdays from now, two weeks is our CPR AED research. So we just know we're not going to be, we're not going to be here. We have to take...
The following meeting is fine.
Okay, all right. I just want to let you know that when you move something from Monday to Tuesday, it is our drill night.
The, the only thing I'm going to add to that, Darren, and you, and I'm sorry, but I, I, I do want to say this, is that $10,000 that you have, that's your personal chief's account, I, I wouldn't spend any of that right now. I'd hang on to that for a bit, at least until we get through these meetings.
Mike, I need stuff for fire car.
What, what do you need?
I just told you earlier, we were short two AEDs. We bought one, I'm going to have to get two more at 12, $1,300 apiece. I need a rule, two rule hitches. I've got one, I've got to get another one. And in my budget, I have flashlights in there. I don't have any flashlights, portable flashlights. So I'm going to have to dip into my account to get flashlights on the truck.
Okay. I, I understand.
We need to go...
No, we're, we're moving on. We're done. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is emergency management, Vermont Alert. I think that's you?
That's me.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Rick Bates. I'm the emergency management director. And I want to talk to you about Vermont Alert, and I'm not going to take long, and I don't want to be long.
Good, so I don't think there's any there.
Yay!
Do I talk to you about, oh, not yet. I'll, I'll, I'll come. Um, Vermont Alert, back in 2013, the state of Vermont established something called Vermont Alert. What it is, is it's a way that the state-level, um, emergency management people shoot out those notices about ice storm coming, or there's a toxic spill on Route 20, don't go that way, this, this sort of stuff. It has to get out fast, and has to get out to a lot of people. Now, you can hit that. Anyone can sign up for Vermont Alert. Each, how many of you have that on your phones? Anybody? You just, you go on the website, you sign up for it, and then on your phone, you will get these little, I can tell you, and you'll find out that the, the roads, it's going to be zero by noon or whatever. It's free, and what I'm going to be doing at the town meeting is encouraging, I'll have a, I'm going to have a table, and I'll be passing out stuff, encouraging just people as they go by, sign up for this. You'll find, you'll get the information that you need faster. You won't have to wait until you hear it on the weather at night, you'll get it immediately. Hit it again. It's this, it's a service of Vermont Emergency Management, it's completely free. Hit it again. And you choose what alerts you want to get. Air quality alerts, beach colors, we won't use much, but, you know, come around Lake Champlain, that would, that's one of the categories. You go through this great long menu, picking, yes, I want that, no, I don't need that, so on, fire alerts, power outages, weather alerts, and then under weather alerts, there's like, you know, 10 different categories, tornadoes and whatever. You set those up. About three days later, you say, whoa, I think I'm gonna take some of those off, because the damn phone's blowing up. And you find whatever your level is. And the alerts can be sent as text messages on your cell phone. They can be sent to an email address. They can be sent to your own phone. If you need TGI services, then you can get them that way. You choose. You tell them where to send it. Hit the X, please. You can get alerts for up to five Vermont towns, you know. I thought, oh, I need to know Windsor County, because if the roads are out in Windsor, that matters to us. Well, Windsor County was a mistake, because there's a whole lot going on. Very quickly, they said, nope, weather's still only. But if you have kids at UVM, maybe you want to know what's going on up there, too. So you can just check that. Or if you have a second home, or if your friends are... Go ahead.
I have no friends.
And these are, these are the sort of things, you get it as a text message. You get this sort of thing. And they're, they come very quickly. Again, it's free. It's free to all Vermonters. That's the recipient end of it. That's what we would get to make our own plans about, whether we're gonna go out tonight or stay home. Now, the other side of it, and this is what I'm, why I'm talking to you, is because I need your buy-in to do what I think we should do. Vermont Emergency Management trains local people like myself to be able to generate those notices. So if Ray calls up and says, there's a bridge out, or texts me, water drove over the, was it lottery lane, I guess, was the last time that we had bad weather, there was a time when the road was I think it was down to only one lane, but it was compromised at least. He called, and we were sending text messages back amongst ourselves, but we couldn't tell the population. I called Brandon, because I didn't have access to the town Facebook page, because you put this on Facebook, and he did. And so if somebody happened to go to Facebook, they would find that out. If they didn't, they wouldn't know. What I want to get is, I want to get us trained so that I can be one of the people who generates those little notices. And then everybody in town who signed up will get it, and they would find out about something like the lottery lane situation immediately, rather than, because they happen to check Facebook at a time. In order for us to get trained, the select board needs to agree to have the town participate in Vermont Alert. The participating in should be in that. You're okay with the idea that your emergency management people are going to get trained to generate those reports? Now, if we don't do that, I can call the watch person at, I don't know, there's Montpelier, Waterbury, up there somewhere. There's somebody always on call at the state level in emergency management. I can tell them the situation. They can then fire up the computer. They can send something out, but there's a 15 to 30-minute delay in that. If we get the training, I can generate it instantly, and it's out. What I want, what I'm suggesting that we do, I think Brandon should go to the training, I think I should go to the training, and I think Gary Graham, who is the emergency management coordinator, should go to that training. It's a two-hour, one-time, two-hour training, after which we are then authorized to be able to stand up for the notices. We were considering opening a warming shelter at the 1879 house, the second of the last two power outages, because you had a combination of power outage and really nasty cold at the same time. Learned out that, we put it on Facebook, that this might be a possibility. Nobody called, nobody said they needed it. But we didn't, we did not communicate to everybody in town that it was an option. This would let us get closer to that. At the time that we decided that we were gonna open, essentially open it, we could have sent something out saying, warming shelter is in place if you need it. And if we'd gone out to, I don't know, if we get half the people in town signed up for this, we could do a much better job of reaching people. So, that's the deal. I'd suggest, I encourage you all to go to Vermont Alert and sign up, because if you do get advanced notice of things. I'd also ask you to approve us becoming part of that, so that a few of us can get trained and then generate those notices directly from here. That's it. Still don't keep me mind.
Go, Paul.
So this is a free class?
Yes.
Okay.
Any idea where it is?
I think it's gonna be online.
Well, that's easy.
Yeah.
Well, I guess you won't get mileage in.
No.
Just quickly, do you know, is there any tracking numbers or anything? Do you know how many people in this town are already on this?
I don't.
Is there a way, do they know that?
They must, because, well, no. What they would know is how many people want to be notified about what's going on in what.
Gotcha. That's gotcha.
Which would be pretty close.
Yeah, pretty close. I'm all for this 100%, and I think it's great. If you want to take the time to put the alerts out, that's great. And I think it's a good thing for people to get, I mean, everybody's got their phone attached to them now.
It'll improve communication.
Yeah, absolutely.
You were in on that. We had.
Dreadfully.
I was just trying to sign up now.
Mike and I drove around for a day banging on doors.
No, and I, you guys, thank you for doing that.
That day was fine. It was the next one.
But we had a text message group. Anybody who entered a text message, you went to everybody.
But that was where I learned just how much I want to participate in this. I think it's a good thing for the town, but I'll just stick to getting them from you. Dave, go ahead.
I'm making a motion that the town support joining Vermont Alert, and that we let the Weathersfield Emergency Management staff attend the training.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I did, I knew you were over there, too.
Front porch. Why don't you put a post on front porch about it?
Because it isn't timely. Now, what you mean about signing up for it?
Yeah, just for folks to sign up.
Yes, that's a great idea.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The forms all filled out for your signature, so I.
Wow.
Did you bring the check? I never said we didn't want money.
Does it send you to this thing called Everbridge?
Yes.
Okay, so you gotta download that app to your phone. Okay.
Yeah.
I know.
What are we doing?
Yes, I'm telling the time.
Good evening.
Let's go.
I'm all set, too.
You're all set for tonight?
We still have one more meeting for the PowerPoint. We can, is that okay?
Comparative budget report.
Good for me.
Select board annual report. Did everybody get a chance to see that, read that? You okay with it?
Yes.
That doesn't even need to go back on? The select board annual report.
Okay.
Draft town meeting PowerPoint presentation. We can go over that again. Appointments. There is a planning commission vacancy we are holding. I think we said we were gonna wait 30 days.
Yep.
And then post that. Warrants. Do I hear a motion to approve the warrants?
I don't know now.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, good. Go for it.
I, it is what it is.
You gotta read them, though.
Well, maybe not, because we get into discussion, then we can.
No, you already made it. Don't be here till tomorrow.
We'll take a look. Couple of them. I've already picked off, you know, eight, nine thousand. We're ready.
We're ready? Do I have to?
Yes.
You want me to do it?
Yes.
All right, so.
Such a gentleman, Paul.
Kelly made the motion, but I'm gonna read if that's okay, and then she can say yes. So, general fund payroll is $24,483.48. So operating expense, it looks like there's $26,944.96. It wasn't brought down to the total at the bottom branch. Did you see that? So I just... Anyways.
So is that correct?
See what I'm saying? It's not in the double lines. That's all I wanted to verify.
Oh.
Yeah.
Anyways, let me go on with the rest, and we can discuss that. All right, highway fund. Payroll is $15,544.06. Operating expense, $58,126.99. Solid waste management payroll is $23,787.55. Operating expenses, $15,297.15. Library payroll is $3,181.58, with zero operating expense, for the grand total of payroll of $66,996.67, and operating expense of $73,424.14.
I'll second it for discussion.
Motion's been made and seconded, and let the discussion begin.
Okay, when you look at operating expenses, I think Paul's right.
For general fund. For general fund, yes, general fund.
Well, no, when you add the $58,000 on the highway fund, and you add the solid waste operating expenses, that comes up to $73,000. But what happens to this $27,000 up above?
Oh, yeah, right.
That's gonna be added to the operating.
The total at the bottom.
About 100.
I think what happened is the payroll of $24,483, plus the two stipends the board asked to break out, equals $26,944.96. Is that right?
As payroll?
As payroll.
So there's no operating.
So then where's the operating?
Yeah, you're right.
There's no operating expenses?
That's not correct.
Can't be.
This is the accountant's first warrant. I'm just gonna ask for...
So you're making, thank you for, oh, you're just cold.
I'm just cold. I'm gonna stick around. I just want to hear the end of it, so if you don't mind.
No, no, absolutely not.
That's the fun part, the adjourn. That's the best one on the list.
Well, the operating expenses would be, not payroll, so when you look at general fund expenses, they're gonna be all the listing of whatever, you know, Comcast, whatever, you go down through the list here, of, that's gonna equal 26, you know, whatever that number said. So it's not, it's not what you thought.
$26,944.96, so that is the operating.
It's just higher. It should be in those double lines.
But that needs to be added to the grand total at the bottom. And it's not.
Because it wasn't in those double lines.
I see.
It's not added to that. So 58.1 plus 15.2 is 73.4.
Yeah.
It's not.
Gonna add the 26,944.96.
Just based on where it went in, so it doesn't do the automatic.
Yep, that's why.
It's a typo in the way.
Hey, what's going on over there?
So it's $100,369.10.
Say that again. You're gonna have to write this down, by the way.
And just give me, $100,369.10, and just give me another 20 seconds to triple verify this. One second.
So that's gonna be a correction in the motion for operating expenses.
For grand totals, operating expense
Yes.
will change from $73,424.14, that's on the warrant right now type, to
$100,369.10.
One?
That's correct.
Yep. Okay. So, who made the second?
Dave did.
Okay, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's the first part of discussion. Now we enter the rest.
Well, let's take a look at, since we've decided to go under dollar amounts. When we get, when we get to highway, let's take a look at highway parts halfway down, check number 226129, at $8,008. Wonder what that is?
Parts.
That seems to be a pretty strong.
Contracted repairs.
Pretty strong amount.
What page is this?
One of three.
And it says D-hand lamp there in the right-hand corner? Okay, there it says highway.
Well, just keep, when you go on the dollar amount for the check, just look at the big numbers.
Yeah.
And that purchase could be in line.
There's another one.
No, I'd just have to ask Ray about it.
Yep, when you get down.
$6,595 for Reed Supply.
Repair of what? I mean, if we're paying, that's pretty strong amounts of... A long time ago, and I know, you know, we just went through the budget process, but I know in highway that parts, repairs, and all kinds of things got lumped into one big account. That doesn't give us a chance to actually take a look at what's going where for money. It's a kind of a big number that just gets put into one line. As you can see, because the definition of that one says highway repair parts, tools, and I'm sure the SU is short for supplies. I remember before in the past, we'd actually have breakdowns for different things that were, I know what was... I don't know the word I want to choose, but it did break it down so that you knew. We do use a lot, and one of these, the last one that I looked at, the $8,000 one, if you look at the vendor, it says BB Chain, even though it says Chapel, that could very well be chains for all the trucks and greater. We do go through, burn through a lot of chains on the trucks, so.
Brandon?
Yeah.
Brandon, as far as the highway department, where are they at with their budget overall? I'm just curious.
Off the top of my head, I can't.
Okay.
I can't give you an answer, but I can let you know later. But as far as I know, they're
They were good.
directly on track.
Yeah. Okay, I just, just that's.
I just don't know exactly.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to have an idea if they were struggling enough, being over.
Fifty-something.
I just wanted to know.
I think the last thing he gave us was 50-something.
Okay, that's just good to know.
I was close to that.
Okay.
You got new, you got new lights in your office?
Any more?
You got new lights in your office, Brandon?
Yeah, finally.
MND Electric?
Any other discussion? Any further discussion on warrants?
Expenditures are at 47% Wendy, and revenues are at 55%.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, regarding the door garages that were either damaged?
They weren't doors. They were, they were door openers that failed.
Wasn't the garage door?
No, no.
They were the motors.
Any further discussion? Motion to accept the warrants. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
So we're moving two items. The comparative budget report and draft town meeting PowerPoint presentation for the next budget. Warrants are done. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
See? Nobody ever wants to talk about discussion, about adjournment. Good drag.
Are you off a little bit?
I'm almost.